Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Oakman.
Here.
Mr. Quinn. He's. He's muted, Tim.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Sax.
Here.
Mr. Texarney.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Gunning.
Here.
Mr. Chow.
Yeah.
And Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
And you'll know, you know that Julie Capizoli's name was not called. That's because it was somewhat of a glitch somewhere along the line of reappointing her this year, and she was not reappointed. So she's actually technically not on the board for this meeting, but she will be appointed by the time of the next meeting of the board. So just wanted to let everybody know that. Okay. Pursuant to section thirteen.
Jerry?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't think the public has been let in yet.
Oh, okay. They have, they have.
Oh, they have?
Yes.
Okay, because I've only looked, I'm only seeing participants, but maybe I have that wrong. Okay.
There, there are fifty-six attendees.
Okay, so then it's somebody, some people on my end. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by promptly posting the two thousand twenty-one resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings for January of the Planning Board of Princeton. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the fourth day of January two thousand twenty-one. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the January sixth, two thousand twenty-one edition of the Trenton Times. Notice of this meeting has been posted on the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order one oh seven, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-nineteen coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, is transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of April two thousand twenty and on the sixth day of January two thousand twenty-one. As with the regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen or participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or related to matters not before the board will be immediately muted. If you are having difficulty assessing this feature, use a Q and A dialogue box to let tech, to let tech support know, and they will try to assist you. Okay. The first item on, when you, on the agenda is the appointment of, is the election of a chair. Do I hear any nominations?
Yeah, yes. On, on behalf of the nominating committee, after an exhaustive search, we'd like to nominate Wanda to serve again as chair.
Okay, do I hear?
Is this, is this just for the, just for the chair or for also vice chair?
This is just for the chair, and then I'll turn it over to Wanda unless somebody else is selected. Do I hear a second nomination?
I'll second the nomination.
Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? Okay, okay. With respect to the nomination of Ms. Gunning, I think we could do this by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Okay, Wanda, congratulations once again. And now goes over to you.
Okay. And thank you. I did enjoy the four hours of the meeting. Um, let's see. I had, no, I had an, an email from our new mayor asking that I put before this board their first meeting a cha, a, a change in the setup of SBRB that he's contemplating right now. Two members of the SBRB board whose terms were up this year were not reappointed, and one of those positions is to be filled by a planning board member. Can the planning board decide this at their first meeting? And depending upon the timing of the first SBRB meeting and the first planning board meeting, may, we may have to temporarily appoint a planning board member for the first SBRB meeting. I know that sounds a little garbled, but we, the officers have discussed this and we thought we should put it up immediately. Whether you mull it over during this meeting or we decide right now and go back to Mr. Freda about this. Any thoughts on that? Anyone?
But if we decide now, that would be, that would be permanent. That would not be temporary, correct, Wanda?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just want to jump in. I, as a former officer, did discuss this with.
And maybe, maybe soon to be one again.
Um, and I'd like to nominate David Cohen to fill that position. I think not only his professional training, but also his perspective. You know, as a council member and, you know, especially given some of the changes happening with SBRB, I think he'd be a great liaison. So I, I'll move that, but I'm not trying to foreclose other nominations or ideas to bat around.
Thank you. Any, anyone else have any thoughts on this?
I'd like to second that suggestion.
Right? It's been moved and seconded. Any, any further thoughts? Anyone? All right, can we, can we take a, I think, a voice vote since we, none of us have been sworn in, so.
Hasn't, haven't all the members whose term expired at the end of the year, haven't they been sworn in?
No.
No.
I was told that we're going to be sworn in before council. They should all be sworn in tonight.
Yeah.
Carrie, do you have the form?
No, I did not. I, I've never been given that information.
Okay.
I think, I think that simply ask them to raise their right hand and swear that they will do all the things that they say they're going to do during the year.
Why don't we do that right now? For those who, who were reappointed for a new term that started on January one, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear as members of Class Four members or, I guess everybody, I think, is a Class Four member, that you will exercise the powers given to you and responsibilities as Class Four members of the Planning Board and uphold those responsibilities and the Constitution of the United States?
I do.
I do.
So smart.
Okay.
And Wanda, I think next is the appointment of a, is the election of a vice chair?
That's right, and.
Well, did we, do, did you want a voice vote on the appointment of Mr. Cohen for SBRB?
Oh.
Did not complete that action.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we need that.
Yes. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that, that David Cohen be the representative to SBRB from the Planning Board. Can I have a show of hands for people in favor of that? And approach? Okay. So that's, that's the representation at SBRB. And I think that Jeffrey, you, you were going to do the rest of the nominations, is that right?
I, I did have one other nomination on behalf of the committee, and that was, that Louise Wilson replaced the nomination to continue as vice chair.
Thank you. Any?
Second.
Anybody have any other thoughts on that? All right. Suppose we just ask for a show of hands for Louise Wilson as vice chair? Opposition? Okay, that's fine. So Louise is our new vice chair once again. Um, Jeffrey, there was nothing else for any of the other officers? No? Did, truly didn't give you anyone else to do?
No, we just talked about those two.
Okay. So.
Are there other officers that the board has to vote on?
Um, Madam Chair, we do have to make an appointment for Board Attorney, for Board Counsel.
So.
And Secretary.
Right.
Right.
So all we need is a voice vote on the motion and the second, unless there's any further discussion.
Just repeat the motion again, please. Repeat the motion again, please.
That would be to appoint Ms. Mrs. Wilson as the vice chair for two thousand twenty-one, made by Mr. Oakman and seconded by Mr. Cohen.
Okay.
We did have a show of hands already for that.
Right. We already had that vote.
Yes.
I think, right now, we should be doing secretary and then a planning board attorney.
Right.
And you do have at least, Carrie circulated resolutions for both positions.
Yeah. Let's, let's do the secretary first, and then we'll do the board attorney, because I want to speak a little bit about that. If the nomination for, for secretary is Carrie Phillip. Are there any other nominations? Anybody else? I was, Mr. Purcell, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. I can't really see very well what people are doing.
The other staff members have our hands under the table as far as.
I was simply covering my mouth to sneeze, so.
Bad time to sneeze.
So, um, all those in favor of Ms. Phillips as, as the board secretary? Raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, Carrie, you're our board secretary once again. Now let's, let's go to the planning board attorney. As you know, we had a search going on for this, and after much deliberation, the small search committee decided that we would like to go back to Jerry Mueller again as our board attorney. And so we asked him, and he was agreeable to this. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about this? Because I've gotten a fair amount of mail about this over the last couple of months. Anyone? All right. Hearing and seeing none, does somebody want to?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that the position of board attorney be filled by Jerry Mueller. May I see a hand vote? All those in favor? And opposed? All right, so.
Thank, thank you.
We thank you too. Are, are there any other announcements? That's the next.
No.
Several other resolutions could have to be adopted.
Okay. Um, the meeting calendar, this is a resolution February two thousand twenty-one through January two thousand twenty-two. The other two meetings of two thousand twenty-one were handled last year at a board meeting, so the, the calendar, while it's incomplete on paper here, actually does, did meet all the specifications. Can I have a hand show for people in favor of adopting the meeting calendar? Anyone? Okay.
Is that a resolution that needs to be moved and seconded or?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move it.
Okay, and.
Second.
Who is the second?
David.
Mr. Cohen.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the meeting calendar. All of those in favor, raise your hands. Those opposed? Okay. Um, we should have a resolution for special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Does somebody want to move that?
They're moved.
And a second on that? No?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We adopt the resolution for special meetings. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and, um, the third resolution on the, the list was a resolution for, for fixed meetings. This is not very different from the previous one. The, if, let's see, could, could someone move the resolution for fixed meetings?
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Can I see hands on everyone in favor of the resolutions for fixed meetings? Thank you. Yeah.
Wanda, there's one other resolution that we didn't make it on the agenda, but it's the one that talks about charge of ten dollars and forty-five cents to cover the cost of dividing the schedule of regular meetings to anybody.
I believe that's the fixed meetings one.
Oh, that's the fixed meeting. Okay, good, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes. Okay. Um, were there?
We have a set of meeting minutes from two thousand and eighteen.
I think I'll just jump in here real fast, and I'm sure some of the board members are saying, is that a typo? Is it really two thousand and eighteen? I'm afraid, yes, it is two thousand and eighteen. We have some minutes that, for various reasons, we're not completed, but we're catching up on all those past situations. So bear with us, and we'll get caught up pretty soon. Staff is really doing a wonderful job, working very hard to bring the minutes up to date.
And just to clarify, like, we, we can't vote on that if we weren't here, right?
That's correct.
It's correct.
So, um.
The only members present tonight are Mr. Cohen, Mr. Texarney, and Mrs. Wilson.
So we just.
I'll move them.
Okay.
I'll second.
We get a second for that?
I'll second.
Who is that?
Me.
And I.
Okay. So all of those in, in favor of adopting the, the, this set of minutes, which are from two thousand and eighteen? Raise your hand? Anybody opposed? All right. It's really very nice to see some more of these back minutes approved finally going into the files. Um, I don't, are there any other resolutions or back things that are, need to be done before we start on the?
No, I believe that's it.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you, everybody, for bearing up with that. Um, we're supposed to have a discussion of the request for extension from the center's designation. Michael, did you want to do that?
I'm not tonight. We can do that on our next meeting.
Okay.
I have to get a little more information from the state, so I'll ask.
Just find anything more, so. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Why don't we move on then to the disc, the discussion of the, the need of this meeting, which is finally to finish up the discussion on the soccer stadium and the playing field. We were almost finished with this at the time that the witching hour came, and I think that we're at the point where we're hoping Jerry will read us a very complete list of all the conditions, so we can vote on that and, and move ahead. Is that right, Jerry?
Yes, except we had asked the university to come back with a report basically providing more acoustical information as to what the need for the decibel level would be at the soccer stadium as opposed to the way they had designed the system, which was to meet the state code, but it didn't really address what the need was. And I believe they have some material on that and would like to make a presentation.
Okay. So is there someone here to make a presentation on that?
Christopher, do you want to say anything? I'd like to.
Sure. Christopher Degrizia from Figuring Drinker Biddle and Reef. It's nice to see everyone again, see this evening. We are, as, as, as you indicated, Madam Chair, we're here on a continuation for the soccer stadium and practice field application. At the last hearing, we went through all of our testimony, you know, in terms of landscaping, stormwater, traffic, and we ended up on the issue discussing sound. The, the board asked us to come back with some more details and modeling, and I would like to start off this evening introducing our sound consultant or bringing back our sound consultant to provide some more details. So Emily, are you there?
Hi, yes, hello.
Okay. So Emily, we had you qualified last time. You're still under oath.
All right. Duly noted. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes.
So I wanted to kind of go through the, the sound studies again that we did and provide a little bit more information than was at the last meeting, kind of reassure you of our design process.
And let's mark, let's mark this as Exhibit A two. Okay.
All right, so, yeah, I'm going back. So, so page one is just the kind of overview of the site of the soccer stadium. Page two is everyone discussed kind of further information on the sound levels. So here on page three, just to back things up and go back through the modeling and the design process. So we did review multiple different sound system options for the stadium in terms of stadium coverage and, you know, the owner's desired functionality, impact to the community, and other various design factors. And so if we're looking at impact to the community, that is the environmental noise study. And so included in that noise study were the speaker types and the basis of design, the stadium architectural design, surrounding terrain, and standard meteorological and ground effects. The modeling software used is SoundPlan. It's an industry-standard software, and it utilizes an ISO standard for the prediction of sound travel and propagation. That algorithm looks at a conservative approach. I know one of the concerns last time was wind noise, and the model we have is kind of the standard for meteorological. Takes a conservative approach so that we don't expect sound levels in our model to be exceeded due to wind effects. It, it looks at things conservatively. In addition, you know, generally looking within a thousand feet of a, of a site, we wouldn't expect wind to have an effect on the sound levels kind of in, in this modeling. So this is the, the design that we had, the speakers with the press box. These are the same values that you saw last time. This is just a more detailed contour system. So looking at things at a further distance and at a finer resolution. So we're looking at about eighty-one dBA in the west stands, about seventy-eight dBA midfield, seventy-five dBA on the east sideline. And that gives us here at the nearest property line at Fitz Randolph, levels of about sixty-four dBA and roughly fifty-nine dBA up along Western Way. And so this is in compliance with the State of New Jersey noise limits. Um, you know, one question that was asked is the, if we had the speakers on the east side facing west. And so we, you know, we had looked at that, and so we wanted to provide you with these contours. So you see, you could see that we have studied this. And so we're looking at levels of about eighty-two dBA on the near sideline, eighty dBA midfield, seventy-five to seventy-six dBA in the west stands. That gives levels of sixty-three dBA at the nearest property line at Fitz Randolph, and levels of fifty-nine to sixty dBA over here on Western Way to the north of the site. Again, this is also in compliance with the state noise limits, but to kind of go over something, I, I know that, you know, we think of the speakers being sort of like a flashlight, that they're pointed away from the residences. They're pointed at the other side. But, you know, when we're looking at music through these, the low frequencies, the bass sound, the speakers are going to behave more like a light bulb than they are like a flashlight. There's going to be a lot of low-frequency energy coming off the back of them. So while it's not necessarily reflected in these contours because they are A-rated, we would expect the sound levels at the residence to be actually louder, like at the base frequencies, because their source is, is now located closer to those residences, and it's behaving more omnidirectionally, again, more like a light bulb and less like a flashlight at low frequencies. Um, the other thing to note when kind of comparing the two systems is that the speaker is aiming to the west, so on the east facing west. There's going to be a sound delay to the press box and a potential for a, like reflection off of the press box surface. It's a qualitatively worse sound in the stadium, and it's going to be, you know, a, a worse functionality for the PA announcer. And then our models for both of them, it's similar levels inside the venue and, and similar levels at the nearest residences. We're looking at a less than two dBA difference at Fitz Randolph, less than one dBA difference at Western Way. And generally speaking, you know, two dBA conservatively or considered to be the minimum readily perceptible difference in sound level. Three dBA is the typically noticeable difference. So if you have two sounds, it's hard to tell that one sound is necessarily louder than another. Three dBA is kind of the good cutoff for that point. Um, and so for that reason, that's why we were looking at the systems on the east side. It doesn't have those issues with the delay and reflections in the stadium. So it's acceptable sound quality and, and functionality kind of within the stadium. And it, you know, we're limiting the levels to eighty-one dBA in the near stands, seventy-eight at midfield, seventy-five dBA, seventy-five dBA at the far stands. This meets the programmatic needs of Princeton Athletics. Um, and the sixty-five dBA or less than at the property line complies with the state noise limits. And then just to reassure everyone, these limits are going to be set in the processing, in the digital signal processing system for the speakers. It's password-protected, can't be adjusted or bypassed by athletics staff, a PA announcer, an operator. This is not something that can be changed. And so, you know, I, I hope that this is more information that can kind of assure you that these limits are going to meet the, the state noise limits and be acceptable. You were talking about kind of what's, what's the minimum or what's the maximum and that being a concern. So we don't have any data for like an Ivy League soccer game for sound levels. But, you know, the levels that are in the stadium are going to be, you know, slightly lower than what we consider to be, you know, maybe like industry standard for, you know, MLS soccer, small outdoor sports venues, you know? And so, so this is a, this is a balanced design system. It, it wasn't necessarily looking only inside out. It wasn't necessarily looking only outside in. It was, it was a good combination of programmatic design meeting the needs of the university and complying with the state noise limits.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on this? I'm not sure that, of the three people who were here for this application earlier, they're still here, right? There's, there's still three people who heard this or, and heard the questions earlier? Anyone? No? Jerry, do you remember?
How many people spoke?
No. Of the people who were here at the end of this application, are any, are any of them still here? I'd like to at least get a sense that their questions were answered or that they heard the explanation.
Other than. Talking about members of the public, Madam Chair, or? Yeah, okay.
Well, I can name, I can name the people if that'd be useful.
Well, if. I, what I wanted to know was if the, were they here? And they're here now, and they would like, would they like to comment on whether this solves their questions or not? And they're here now and they would like, would they like to comment on whether this solves their questions or not?
Mr. Cohen has a point to make.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually a question, I just want to have Emily clarify. I hear what you're saying about these designed sound levels inside the stadium. You don't have a standard for Ivy League stadiums, but could you tell us what the standard would be for that small ma, you know, major league soccer venue? In terms of what sound levels they would be shooting for inside the stadium?
Yeah, so, so again, this is not a, a standard that would be like written down somewhere, these are not like safety systems, so they don't have to meet a certain high level. I will say typically we design for levels of 90 to 90, maximum levels of 90 to 95 dBA in a soccer stadium. That's not that it would be operated at that level, it's that that's kind of the design to level so that the speakers are, don't get blown out, that's kind of our factor of safety limit. So, yeah, for a major league soccer stadium, I'd say like small baseball, minor league baseball, we're looking at about 90 to 95 dBA in the stands.
But again, that's not the operating sound level, that's the, that's the system, what the system's designed to be able to withstand, sort of.
Yeah, yes, that's, that's the system kind of design.
And you just can't give us a standard operating level?
Yeah, it, it depends on, on the owner, it depends on, you know, how things work. Typically, I'd say that 95 dBA for a stadium that holds about 10,000 people would be the kind of high end of their, their operating sound levels.
Okay.
Okay, any, anybody else have questions or comments on the presentation? And whether it answers the questions that the board raised? Or maybe we just don't have enough of you here.
Can we go back to gallery?
Yeah, Emily, can you stop sharing your screen?
Yeah, I can.
We're, okay. We do have a couple of hands up from the, from the public when appropriate.
Well, I don't see any others, so why don't we start with, if other people come along?
Okay, so the first one is Olga Tryanskaya, I'm going to bring her over as a panelist so that she can be sworn in.
Hi.
Hi, and you, you were sworn into the last meeting, correct?
Yes, I was, thanks.
Yes.
Alright, so, so I can go ahead with the question?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, so I'm Olga Tryanskaya, I'm a professor of computer science, I'm a data scientist at Princeton. And I was the one who actually asked Emily a couple of questions specifically focusing on the modeling, because I do modeling for a living as well. And I was a bit disappointed to see that there was actually no new modeling or all the things that we've actually discussed, it was just more explanations of the same exact model which didn't take into account factors such as wind, which there's quite extensive literature saying does affect sound propagation as well as I think all of us probably realize just from living, affects sound propagation, there's, I mean, I'm happy to share specific papers, but it's pretty much as far as I know, not at all a contentious question. I mean, I realized that the model you guys used didn't, it excluded wind, it excluded rain which dampens the sound, right? Wind can hugely increase the sound by up to 10 decibels in the short range from some of the studies. So, I think that it's really disappointing how the modeling is and it does make calling, I think this is really critical because it calls into huge question over the numbers, right? Right now, currently, so I also have the pleasure of being the house right at the border, the closest residence that has the 65 decibel, the exact legal limit, which is exciting to me to know that my university is aiming for the exact legal limit at 10 p.m. that my kids can enjoy, my five-year-old can enjoy at 10 p.m. But, that means that if there is wind and it goes five decibels over, now we're at 70. And believe me, and remember, decibels is a logarithmic scale, right? So, we're not talking plus five, we're talking times five zeros, right? This is, and you know, I've been living with 65, 70 decibel noise from construction right now and I realize that's, you know, it is what it is, but it's extremely problematic. And I think that's something that I would really like, you know, part of the reason that I really want you to think about this is not just the stadium, but as we get to the Tiger plant construction as well, that this, it is really critical whether we have the right numbers, right? Modeling matters, I'm a modeler, right? I can make a model for you that I will tell you is a great model and it will model and say that it's 150 decibels, right? Every model makes assumptions and every model includes some variables and excludes others. And it's really critical to decide whether the assumptions and the variables make sense to what you're trying to assess, right? There's no perfect model, but there are models that are good enough and there are ones that are not and that bring you the wrong conclusions. So, that's what I really wanted you to consider, thank you.
What suggestion would you make if, 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 if the board was willing to entertain any suggestions by you?
I mean, I'm not obviously an engineer, but it seems like, for example, a hard, you know, a barrier on the neighborhood side, right? Could actually be incorporated into the building and actually could be beautiful, right, in the Princeton style with the ivy on it, right, like, but an actual hard sound wall? Or at the very least, the idea that we've talked about before, that the board actually, I think, requested the university to consider turning the speakers around, right? I mean, that seems to be two suggestions that I, as a, I'm an expert in data science, I'm not an expert in architecture, but, you know, in my completely non-expert view, that seems to be something to consider.
So, so, we could probably respond to a few things there. Emily, do you want to talk a little bit about how wind comes into your modeling? Because I think what you've determined is at that location, that's not going to be impactful and it's part of the environmental factors, is that correct?
Yeah, so I just kind of want to clarify, this is something we didn't explain enough, so we're, we're following the ISO standard for how sound propagation is calculated and what is not included is what I would call like wind variability, it's not that the wind is, you know, one direction until, you know, 2 p.m. and then changes direction and so what we're looking at is you know, a, a generally downwind condition at all locations. And, and that's just how these meteorological factors are accounted into the model. So, that's to say that, you know, we're looking at kind of a standard of downwind and we are not taking away wind in our model, this is a conservative estimate. We do not believe that the levels will be higher than these predicted levels in a windy condition.
So, can I just reiterate that this is an industry standard model, so this is not something you custom make? It's an industry standard model and it has within it, the modeling has in the downwind assumption that you just, you just described.
Correct.
And it's, is it also the case that the, the, this, this is not logarithmic?
No, so, no, decibels are logarithmic.
Okay, and the, the difference between sort of two or three decibels is intelligible or non-intelligible?
So, I'd, I'd say that a, a 2 dB difference is kind of at that, that barrier between somebody can tell the difference or not. You know, I'd say, you know, sound is a logarithmic scale, how it is perceived in terms of loudness is not you know, something that's generally speaking, I'd say a 10 dB difference is considered twice as loud. That 2 to 3 dB difference is where you can just notice that a sound is louder than another sound.
The, the, the other thing I just want to point out, and you've heard testimony to this before, is that this stadium is not where like practices are, this is the actual stadium where the women's and men's soccer teams play their games. So, the sound system is only on, it's only turned on during the times those games are taking place. So, you know, in our prior testimony, we said, you know, it's around 20 games a year. When, you know, I took a quick look at the, the various years, you know, in 2019, there was 18 games, 2018, 18 games, 2017, 18 games, 2016, 16 games, 2015, 21 games. So, even if you say there's 25 games a year, that means 300, you know, 40 days, there's, the system's off. There's, there's, the system is completely off, so I, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that as well, that, you know, 20, 20 games a year is when it's going to be turned on. That's about it on a, on average.
And Christopher, in those five years, I think we had two games that lasted past 10 p.m.
Actually, yeah, that's correct, so in that five-year period, soccer games usually take about two hours. Most of the games start at seven, a few of them at five, a few of them at six. Two of the games started at eight, that doesn't mean they necessarily went past 10, but there's, you know, if it is two hours, past two hours, it could have gone a little past 10. So, in that five-year period, only two games started at eight o'clock, everything was before that.
Did we have another hand up with a question on this?
Yes, there is, Tom Cronin, I'm going to bring him over now.
Yes, please.
Hello.
Yeah, and you were sworn in previously.
Yes, I, I'm going to be extremely brief, I think there's about 30 people that want to talk about the, the power plant. So, I just want to touch on one thing that Emily said and just to get total crystal clear clarification. When you said 3 decibels is noticeable, is that correct? Is that, is that what you said is noticeable change in the, in the environment?
If, not necessarily noticeable change in the environment, I'd say if, if you are playing two like sounds, most people can tell a difference in sound level once they get 3 dB apart.
Can you just quote what you said in your presentation? I have, this is what I, this is what I had you say, it's considered to be a typically noticeable sound difference, is that correct?
Yes, a, a level difference of those is a noticeable sound difference, yes.
So, 3 decibels is considered to be a noticeable sound difference in the environment? That's, that's all I wanted to get clarification on.
I, I would, let me, let me say, in the environment is, is tricky, I'm talking about comparing essentially two, two like sounds, so you know, playing a sound through a speaker and then playing the same sound 3 dB quieter. In the environment, there's a lot of factors that can change things.
No, I, I, this is just, this is, yes, absolutely, this is just in contradiction to what Julie Fisher's said on numerous occasions. Who is the sound technician for the, for the power plant? So, I just want to get clarification about that 3 decibel is, is noticeable. That's, that's all I got. Thanks.
Could I just ask, is it possible to hypothetically set up a, a study of what the sound is like by just trying it for a short time or one time or something? And see whether turning the speakers improves things? Or some of the other, other suggestions that were made? Anybody? Don't tell me, I'm muted again.
I, I think Emily addressed the issue of relocating the speakers. I don't think the, I mean, and Emily is probably the person to answer this, but I don't think a sound wall is really going to work here, first, the size of it would be tremendous and it really wouldn't add anything and for, like I said, you know, 340 days a year, it's not even on, between 340 and 345. And then, even when it is on, we're not talking about football or hockey where there's a stop, announcement, go. In soccer, it's, the game starts and the clock keeps on running and it's not announcement after announcement or, or song after song, like in hockey, every time the puck stops, the, the music blasts. So, it's, it's a very different experience. But Emily, did you, did you have a response for anything other? I think you already went through why we didn't shift the, the speakers.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, we looked at, at several different models, so, you know, we showed you two different ones here. But we looked at preliminary models of, of other speaker layouts and things like that and this was again, the best compromised design between meeting the state noise limits and providing a good environment in the stadium.
Alright, any, anybody else?
Yes.
Michael, yeah, Michael, the place.
Thank you, I, I, I wanted to ask the university, maybe this question's for Ron or another part of, member of his team. Was there any consideration given to flipping the east and west stands or sides of the stadium? And directing the, most of the sound to the west towards the center of campus as opposed to having it go east towards the neighborhoods?
Well, in addition to what Emily has said about the speaker locations being a light bulb rather than a flashlight, being omnidirectional. Which is the point, the point there is that the location of the, of the fixture mounts wouldn't, wouldn't make a difference, a noticeable difference. The reason that the press box is on the west filming to the east is to avoid sun. So, to have flipped the stadium and put the press box on the east pointing to the west would have put the sun in the face of the cameras.
The press box can't be above the stands?
Is about, the press box is above the stands and it's on the west side looking to the east, so if you, so we flip it, then it would be facing, it would be on the east facing to the west, or did I misunderstand your question?
Yeah, I, I guess I just, regardless of whether it's the way the east or west fans are configured, it seems like it could accommodate a press box either way, but you're saying that there wouldn't be any way to, to flip the direction of most of the amplification to go west towards the campus?
Well, we can, but, and that's what Julie addressed, her sound study that she showed, said that it's about a 2 dB difference.
Okay, I remain puzzled by the layout of the stadium, but thank you.
Chair, and maybe I can, maybe I can take some of the puzzlement out of Michael's mind here.
Okay.
First of all, with, what Emily testified to and what our own consultant who happens to be here, if you have any questions for him, Joe Keeffe from Ostergaard Acoustics is, is with us. We've, we've looked at this, we've, we've evaluated the models that they have, they have prepared. And I think Joe Keeffe ran a couple of models himself. But if you put the speakers on the west side, as Emily just testified, there is an almost indiscernible difference in the sound levels outside the stadium. The one thing that she didn't say was that, and, and she mentioned it, but that at the frequencies for the bass levels that there's going to be even larger propagation. And I would not being an acoustical engineer, but I'd rather hear the high ends when I'm outside the stadium than hear the sound of the booming bass at those high, those same decibel levels. So, you have to understand that decibel levels are just a, a measure of the, of the sound, but they're, the, the annoyance factor of, of sound is different depending on the frequency of the noise. Am I saying that right, Emily and Joe?
You want to go first, Emily?
Joe.
I'll, I'll let you speak, I'll let you go.
Hold, hold, hold on one second, Joe, hold on, have you been sworn, I don't think you've been sworn in, have you? If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So, sworn or affirmed, please take your name and spell your last name.
My name is Joe Keeffe, K-E-E-F-E. I work at Ostergaard Acoustical Associates in Woodbridge and we are the acoustical consultant independently engaged by municipality Princeton to evaluate this application.
Thank you.
So, just a real brief overview here, I've gone through Emily's sound system designer or through her firm's sound system design. We ran a rough model of it ourselves to confirm it, their predictions, which are much more finely done, match our rough predictions, so we can corroborate that this model is accurate. We, you know, we can state that the things that Emily is testifying to such as the, the ISO standards and the levels predicted property lines are, are reasonable and, and we attest to that. So to answer Jim's question, um, the answer is it depends. So, you know, music, sound and speech sound that come from speakers, it changes all the time, right? It's not a steady noise from a source like a fan. So, um, I think the important point to realize here is that if speakers were on the east side of the stadium pointed to the west, they would direct less noise towards the houses, but they're closer to the houses if you put them on the east side. So Emily's testimony is that they pretty much be the same level, which we agree with. And there's lots of other good acoustical and non-acoustical reasons to have the speakers where they are.
Okay, Jeffrey?
Muted.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I was just curious, um, you know, because I think that, you know, we, we've talked, we've talked a lot about like how you could change this around. But, but, and, and I, I see that there's issues with that. I was wondering like, sort of, and, and, you know, um, Madam Chair, as of that, asking if you could do a test, like I'm wondering if we, do we have any idea, either Emily or Joe, like how, how the sound from the emanating, emanating from this would be, would compare to like the sound from the, the high school football stadium here? Cause I, I live like a block, two blocks from the high school stadium. And, you know, we can, we can hear the, we can hear the sound sometimes when there's a football game, like lots of people in this area can. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure. I, I think everyone notices it. I'm not sure that anybody finds it to be disruptive, even if it's later in the evening. And if you have any idea how that would compare to the numbers we're talking about.
And you could survey the high school football sound. I, I can't say hell out of B. What I can say is that we know from the applicant's experts' ambient survey results that the sixty-five D B A maximum prediction is, is quite a bit over the ambient sound level. And I don't think that, that anyone's pretending that you're not gonna be able to hear these sound systems when they're at, at their loudest. As for the comparison, you know, we have this prediction. I, I don't know what the stadium sound levels are from the high school and obviously it depends on distance. And I believe, uh, the chairwoman talked before about doing a, a test or what we normally call a mock-up. And I want to point out that the sound system design for this stadium has loudspeakers fifty feet up the light poles. It's not really something that you can mock up in a reasonable fashion. You'd have to, you know, build a, uh, to, to put a speaker fifty feet up in the air is either a permanent thing or a very involved temporary thing. We need to, we need to acknowledge the practicality of that.
Were there other?
Mr. Cohen has a question.
David?
Yeah. I keep coming back to the question of what the design noise levels should be. And it seems to me that we're working with a pretty high design level predicated on the ten thousand person maximum capacity of the stadium. The testimony we heard before was that for many of these games, we're probably talking about two hundred and fifty to five hundred, um, spectators. And it seems to me that the noise or the, the sound level for the sound system has to be increased when you have a large crowd because you have to, uh, overcome the crowd noise and that it should be possible to use a lower design sound level for games that are less well attended. And I think that one thing that might help satisfy the neighbors, and we also know that, we've been told that the sound system can automatically be reduced in level if it goes after ten o'clock, right? Because the sound, the state sound rules change at ten o'clock. So what would seem to me to be a good compromise would be to say that for regular season games where there are only gonna be a few hundred people in attendance and you don't need the sound system to overcome the crowd noise, that you could have a lower target, uh, loudness for the sound system for those games and only use the higher, uh, capacity of the system when you have playoff games, for instance.
Uh, can I point out, and maybe Emily can jump, go ahead, John, let me respond.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, uh, speak to your point about, um, you know, playing over the crowd and, um, just say that that's, that's not how a sound system is designed or operated. This is not a life safety system, so it does not need to overcome crowd noise. It is not designed to overcome crowd noise, even in a typical football stadium. Um, you know, Alabama scores a touchdown, the sound system there is not designed to overcome that crowd noise. So I just wanna be, you know, clear about that with the sound system design. In, in terms of, um, operating at a lower level, I think that, um, you know, the levels we're operating at are, are fairly low. It's, it's something that, you know, Princeton Athletics is, is comfortable with, with kind of how they expect to use the stadium. But, um, you know, these are generally speaking lower than, like I guess I'd say, you know, a typical stadium. And Ron, you were gonna speak to something else?
I was just gonna say the same thing you did. It's, it's not that the speaker is designed to overcome the crowd noise. Crowd noise happens and then the speaker speaks. So the speaking, the speaking is typically when there's not the crowd noise. There's not a big announcement that there's a goal scored.
I, I was, I'm into and, and state that this system, the, the predicted levels from the system already indicate a, uh, a deficit relative to the ideal level throughout the seating area, that there is a design compromise inherent in this system.
Meaning that we're designing at the low end of, of need.
Exactly.
We still have another member of the public who wishes to speak, Ms. Nissenbaum. She spoke at the last meeting.
Yes.
I'll bring her over.
Great. This is Helen Nissenbaum.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Um, just a couple of very quick comments. First, first of all, I appreciate the chair's, um, request for, for the possibility of testing. One thing I'm very concerned about is whether, and this is a question about the planning board's role. Let's say, as the lawyer has said, Mr. de Gresia, that, oh, we're only talking about twelve games. Is there some way that this claim can actually be made into a promise and a commitment? So that if the university perhaps sort of rents the stadium out to other, uh, teams and it turns out actually they're twenty or thirty or forty, that we can come back and say, you've broken your promise? So that's one concern. The other concern is about the claims of what people are sensitive to in the decibel counts. I'm not prepared, having lived through the drilling, cause I'm one and a half blocks from, um, the, the east campus construction and the borehole drilling has literally been driving us crazy. And as, as we know, there are thirty-something people who are attending this meeting to discuss the next, next item. We've been told, we've been given promises and nobody has actually been considering the experience of the noise by people. And on the one hand, we're supposed to follow the decibel counts. And then on the other hand, we're supposed to believe that, oh, you know, nobody notices two decibel or a level, uh, a, a change of two decibel or three decibel. Where's the evidence? We need evidence. We, we can't just sit here and be told things that we're supposed to believe when our experience tells us something else. Thank you. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm ready to move to the next, uh, item whenever you guys are because I think the next item is actually much more important for us.
Thank you. All right. Um, are there any other comments on, on this item before we come to a decision and, and move along? I must say, I'm, I'm very ambivalent about deciding on this without really knowing that we can set some sort of standard that they have to, have to meet because.
I, I would point out that there is a standard. It's, it's the New Jersey Noise Code. It's already there. It's already protecting the public. If there's a violation, excuse me, there's a suspected violation of that, an inspector can come out and measure. And if appropriate, can issue a citation and/or a fine to the university. This isn't something that the planning board needs to create a, um, their own limit. It already exists.
I wish we could, but it doesn't seem to work that way. Anyone else? Any thoughts on this?
Well, the question was raised, uh, this is Louise, about, um, whether or not the university would or could li- limit the number or commit to a limit on the number of games, um, or, you know, evenings when the, the facility would be used. So I'm, I'm just curious about the university's response to that particular, uh, question.
Anyone?
Christopher, I think that would be for you.
Would it be for me or for, um, uh, somebody in athletic department?
Well, I think, I, I would say that the, you know, N C A A rules limit the number of soccer games. So there, there's a schedule requirement that the N C A A imposes. And this is, this is serving the varsity soccer team. Also, the project is in compliance with state regulations.
And, um, and the university does not, you know, like some of the practice fields are under the bubble, other people use the varsity soccer stadium is not rented out to other people or, or given to other people to use.
It, anybody know what the, um, N C A A limit on the number of games is? I mean, is that twenty twenty-five or?
We have, we have Jeff Grayden from athletics. Um, if anyone knows, uh, Jeffrey could answer that question.
I, I do not know that answer. I do know, and I testified earlier about, we, we cannot overuse the stadium because the natural grass will not hold up. Robert Stadium had the same kind of natural grass. It's a blue, a pure stand bluegrass. And in Robert Stadium, we only used it for varsity soccer with several exceptions. We had a couple of international practices there. Occasionally, we, we get a lot of requests. A number of years ago, we had a request to use fifty-two stadium by the high school because their facility wasn't available. Look, it's, it's there for Princeton, for our use. And I, I don't think we would say we would absolutely never rent it out. It, it's possible we would, but it, it's, that's not the purpose of this stadium. It's for varsity programs and, and I was very clear about use. I, I'm the person who's tasked to maintain it and it would probably put me right over the edge if we felt. Thank you.
Jeff, I just wanted to ask for clarification. It was your testimony that it's for both men's and women's teams, but primarily for soccer and none, not other activities?
I, I, I'll say it's exclusively with a slight caveat. There might be, you know, something someday, but it's for men's and women's varsity soccer. And that's what it was designed for and that's how we intend to use it, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, I feel like, sort of like a dog with a bone. Um, it, it, are you not willing to, um, is the, is the university willing to accept any, any limit on the number of days or evenings that the P A system would be engaged for, for a game i- in a given year, even if it were, you know, outside the N C A A, you know, limit or, I, I, I'm just, you know, trying to think about, uh, some boundaries that are completely reasonable, uh, and that will give the neighbors some assurance that five years from now, it's not suddenly being used every week or every other week. Um,
if, if, if there's a concern, we could take a, um, measurement or reading once the system is built to show that's in compliance. I mean, we, we're talking about a permitted use that's, all our models show will be fully compliant with the law. If there's a question that there isn't, we can certainly do a test after and demonstrate it and produce it to, you know, the, the engineering or the sound consultant for the municipality to confirm.
Or we could have an independent testing agency.
Yeah, you, you know, like, when we're talking about, I mean, you know, when, when we're talking about how things are actually used, like a store, you know, they say they're open from nine to five. But, you know, unless an ordinance says all the stores need to be closed at five o'clock, that's one thing that everybody can agree on. But here, you know, like I said, we're permitted use, we're full compliance. What I would, what we would be willing to do is show and demonstrate that compliance. Uh, and we, like we said, our facts and our statements are of the last five years. And it'll, it gives you an idea how, how often it's used. But because, uh, you know, it's not, I would rather see us required to meet the law in this particular instance.
Christopher, I take it the, the other side of that coin is if, um, the testing shows that you're not in compliance, you'll make adjustments so that you will be in compliance.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it could be done through the municipal consultant and the municipality. Absolutely.
Well, in, in, out of respect to the neighbors who wanna see us move on to the next application, I, I'm gonna move, uh, that we approve this without any additional conditions imposed relative to the sound system, uh, based on the fact that it's compliant. And ask if Jerry can read, you know, what conditions were requested last time.
Okay. And David, um, what Christopher just articulated, you, you don't want that in his condition then? About the post.
Yeah.
If they're willing to do it, we can certainly ask them to, you know, do some testing of the system.
Okay, so that'll be one condition. Let me just go through all the others. I'll try and do it quickly because obviously the major application is, is, has not yet. Now, I know just another condition with respect to sound. Um, Ms. Pierceall had testified at the last hearing that the sound, um, system level would be automatically adjusted. And I take it that's after ten P M, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have that as a condition also.
Yeah.
Then, um, and we've done this typically, um, there was a forty-seven slide presentation, exhibit A one at the first meeting, showing a, a lot of designs, et cetera, et cetera. So the plans will have to be consistent with those, uh, with what's shown on A one. Okay, then going through Jim and Derek's memo. And, and by the way, Derek, um, there is a, what's described as a waiver from the requirement of a forty-foot maximum height for the light poles, where they'll be a hundred foot, uh, high in the stadium and seventy feet high for the practice field. Uh, is that a, is that in the zoning section, the requirement? Or is it in the, uh, site plan design section? Cause it's in the zoning section. It's obviously a variance.
Um, it says it's a wa- I believe it's a waiver. Let me double check.
The, uh, the stat, the, the ordinance itself says it could be approved as a waiver by the board. So the language in the provision itself identifies it as a waiver.
Okay, that's fine then. Um, so this would be preliminary and final site plan approval with, with this waiver for the, for the, for the light poles in the stadium and the practice field. Then just going through Jim and Derek's report, page three, table of bulk regulations must be revised to reflect the bulk regulations of the former township. Then here's, here's something that the university might object to. Was recommended that the tree, that the tree of heaven, trees and their root systems be removed. Princeton University is developing a management treatment plan for the ally anthus, that's the tree of heaven, and these trees should be included in that plan. Is there any objection to that?
We talked about why we wanted the tree of heaven. In some instances, it's located next to really nice specimen trees to, where we didn't want to, we wanted to minimize disturbance, and we asked to be able to at least run that through with professionals, make sure that the arborist agrees and care for it in that way. If we can't, if we have to take it out, we can take it out, but we would like the ability to preserve those areas without disturbing them. We think in most cases, they're good specimen and would like to preserve them.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that staff was very concerned about the preservation of the existing landscaping from the grounds of the former observatory, the Beatrix Farrand surviving legacy there.
Okay.
But that, that doesn't include the ilanthus tree, does it, Michael? I mean, they're not wanting to hang on to a tree that is going to generate a gazillion spotted lanternflies.
No, I don't know where this, I don't know where those are located. Maybe the applicant could make that clear to us right now.
I think what Michael was implying was that if taking out an ilanthus disturbs the Farrand woods, then that's a mitigating factor to leave it in there. Jerry, if you could just, if I could suggest the wording for that condition was, is that the university worked with the municipal arborist to determine the removal or, or leaving in place or some wording to that effect.
Yeah, let me just.
That clarification, that was good.
Makes sense to us.
That's what Taylor suggested.
Okay, then the landscape, the landscaping and the landscape and traffic controls plans must be coordinated to ensure that adequate site distance is provided and maintained at driveway and roadway intersections. Then the plan should be corrected to show the correct reference at the match lines. Free planting plans, for example, refer to the site plans instead of the adjacent tree plans. And, and this is related, clear, site trims must be provided at the driver and road intersections and indicated on the plans.
Jerry, are you on the engineering and zoning reports still?
Yes, I'm now on page seven. Did you have something, Christopher?
No, I was just going to say, you know, other than like some of the traffic comments, which would really just reference the traffic letter, and we can deal with that at the time, we agree with all the conditions.
Right. And if I can, if I can interrupt again, I did do a summary of conditions in this report at the, on page eight.
Right, yep. And I think, Jim, I've covered all of those by going through page by page. So that's it on the memo from Jim and Derek. Then for the stormwater management, there's a whole set of conditions that start on page three. There's, I think, I believe 14 of them, and I could read them, but do you want me to read them, members of the board?
Jerry, again, sorry for interrupting, but that is condition three in my summary of conditions, that stormwater management design must be revised and approved by the land use engineer. And I will state for the record that they have done 99.5% of what we've asked them to do. We are just seeking some additional details that they've agreed to provide to us on additional underground stone recharge.
Okay, so Jim, in light of that, and that's your 6.0, number three, we don't have to include separately any of the conditions in the stormwater management report.
Oh, and I would ask Joe Scoopian to jump in and confirm that right now. Joe?
Yeah, Jim, I agree.
Okay, that's great.
We have met, we've gone over the details. Angel's on the head of a PIN-type argument that engineers love, and we've come to agreement. It's just now getting the details.
Okay, that's great. So that makes things easier. But then, just moving on to Heather's report. Page two, traffic calming devices should be considered along Jettman Drive, devices such as texture pavement and speed tables. Raise, i.e. raise pedestrian crossings or alternatives that can be implemented. Chris, jump in if.
Yeah, so I think we can say we agree with all the conditions with the exception of that one in terms of studying it. We are not proposing, we believe that the Jettman Drive is low-speed, low-volume. We're not proposing anything at this time. However, we will certainly monitor it, and if it's determined next one's needed, we'll put one in. But because of the low volume, because we have somebody there during games, in key times, we didn't feel that one was needed at this time.
Okay.
And I agree, and that, that can just be included as part of the, the post-development study, that monitoring.
Okay, just bear with me. Then I'll put in from Heather's report, number four, which is the key intersections and mid-block locations should be further evaluated with the development to basically address queuing operations, et cetera. And number five, which deals with the post-development study.
Correct, yeah.
Can everybody hear me okay? Because I'm hearing something in the background. Everybody can hear me all right?
Yeah.
And Dan Dobremilsky's report. Again, he, well, he talks about the tree of heaven, but we've discussed that, so we don't need to do that individually. And then his point number four, the section drawings included with this mission, a very illustrative of the proposed land form associated with this project. Now the design will enhance the functional uses as well as the visible public facade of these facilities. The key for the location of these sections should be highlighted, just a minor point. Then the shade tree commission on page two talks about the trees to be protected. There are 79 of these are ashes. They will require treatment from the emerald ash borer if they are to survive. So we'll put that in. Okay, then safeguarding, the next one from the shade tree commission is safeguarding the area around the tree so that the roots are not disturbed. And that's the final paragraph. I just summarized it, tree protection zone. Then on the sprab report, there's only two recommendations. One is porous pavement should be considered along the walk, the walkways. I know, I believe the university is objected to that. Correct, Christopher?
I'm sorry, what was that, Jerry?
This is the sprab report, recommendation one, porous pavement should be.
Yes, yes, yes. We showed how we, you know, we were using alternative systems to handle the stormwater management that had sort of an equivalent function of bringing it back into the earth. Jerry?
Apparently lost audio. It's.
He's muted.
Okay, now he's muted. Jerry, you're muted.
I was kicked, I was kicked off for some reason. I don't know what happened. Is everybody comfortable?
Jerry, instead of the porous pavement, what we testified, we went through, we put this green infrastructure on the south side of the stadium. And the protection adjacent woodland area south of the practice field was better suited to meet the needs and regulatory requirements.
Right, and that's in the plans now, correct, Christopher?
Correct.
Yep, okay. Then the second one is the service drive to the soccer stadium should meet Fitz Randolph Road, connect centered on driveway to the parking for the preschool for safety visibility. I think your point was, it's really not a road. It's a, it's just a surface drive.
Exactly. It's very rarely used.
Okay, and if anybody with, on the board is uncomfortable with that and wants something like that in, just, you should yell. Then the only other report I have is the report by the environmental commission, and I'll just summarize them on, they're on page two. It's the executive summary. Natural grass turf, rather than artificial turf for the practice field, the university has rejected that for the reasons that really given Mr. Grayden, Grayden earlier, at least by analogy at the same point. And then increase the use of naturalized stormwater basins with low-impact development design strategies and green infrastructure, including bio-retention gardens and vegetated swales, incorporate permeable pavement and/or porous pavement. And you've just described, Christopher, what you're doing in that regard, which is, I think, a variation on that same theme, and includes actually some of the same points.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, our testimony was pretty clear on what we were proposing in terms of the stormwater management.
Okay, and then incorporate the use of carbon removal technology for concrete and CMU portions of the building. And I think the testimony by Mr. McCoy was that you're going to look at, you're very interested in that, and you're going to look at that. You don't know whether it's, it's a point of development where it really can be used. Is that a fair recollection or my off-base?
We are, we are, our partners in that is, are the construction industry, and we're working with a with, with the construction industry to see if they can achieve it. So far, the local ready-mix plants have not been able to achieve effectively the goals of carbon cure.
Okay, so I don't think we have to make, I don't think we should have a condition with respect to that. And then the last one from the executive summary of PEC is provide rainwater harvesting for soccer field irrigation. And I think the university, were you doing any rainwater harvest? I think you already, I don't think you were, but you had, you had an alternative to that.
Yes.
We're conserving the water through adaptive vegetation.
Okay, so I don't think any of those should be included unless board members want to talk about that, and that's all I have. I'm sorry.
There, there was a mention in their report about LEED. University is not going to seek certification, but we're designing it to lead Silver standards.
Okay, let me see, I might have that somewhere.
I don't know if that's a condition or not, but we're, we're not, we're not actually seeking certification. It's a, you know, seasonal use, basically. And it's being designed, however, towards the LEED Silver standard.
So.
Good to hear. Also, I, I, I know that we, not in the, I guess, testimony phase or the question phase, but there was also mention about organic best practices, management, organic best management practices as opposed to using synthetic fertilizers and herbicides and pesticides. Is there any statement on that? Quick statement?
I'm not sure about that one. Jeff, maybe?
Yeah.
Grayden?
I'd be happy to answer that. I wrote the integrated pest management plan for Princeton Stadium when it was natural grass. We do integrated pest management. We are not 100% organic. We are not 100% chemical. We pick the right product for what we need. For example, if we had a grub situation with adult grubs, or they're immatures, actually, we would use something that would kill them. If we were trying to do a preventative program, we might use something like BT, which is a bacillus thuringiensis. But committing to only using that would be unwise from a management standpoint. We do make a lot of efforts to manage our use very carefully, but I would be unwilling to commit to that, to a condition.
Okay.
Okay. And then the only other one I have from PEC is that they recommend that applicant provide a stormwater management inspection and maintenance plan for subsurface stormwater and groundwater recharge systems. And I can't, the page is unnumbered, but it's under.
I'm not sure where that is, but we'll have a stormwater management plan.
Required, don't?
Yeah.
There's an operations and maintenance plan required to be submitted, and that's, that's just standard.
Yep, we'll include that, and Madam Chair, that's all I have.
All right. Anybody else have any, they want to add or change? If not, I think that we should someone, ask someone to move Jerry's conditions.
And preliminary and final major site plan approval with the waivers with respect to the light pole heights.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing I didn't mention. I'm just looking at my notes. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. We would also like the flexibility if the need arises for early start based on the discretion of Jim Purcell, if, if ability to, if, if something comes up. That was typically what we do with all our applications as for that. You know, for example, we have construction going on. If we have to run a utility line, like a water line, it gives us the ability to do that sequence sequentially without, you know, starting without having everything completely all lined up.
Didn't we do that for the residential colleges?
Yeah, same, same thing. We'd just like to make it aware, the board aware of it, because we're asked for that as part of our application, case, case there's a need.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm fine with that.
Right. Any, any further discussion, many of the conditions are this? And we have, it's been moved and seconded?
No, I don't have a second yet. Who's second?
Does someone want to second the? Move, the conditions were moved, and we need a second. Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second it. I'll second.
Okay. Who was the first one on that?
I think it was Alvin.
Mr. McGowan.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. I think that we need a roll call on this one, definitely.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunny?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much, board members. I don't know whether the 10-minute break has gone away or not. Do you want a break now, or do you want to just go on with the second application?
Five minutes would be nice.
All right. Why don't I give you five minutes if you'll really stick to that? I don't want, it's really very hard to find people who wandered off in this meeting, like me. Okay.
I'll be good.
Okay, it's nine, it's nine minutes after, so it's about 14, 15 minutes after we reassemble. And in the meantime, ask the applicant to set up for this, the next application, which is also Princeton University.
Wanda, my, my clock says 9:04, 9:05, so we're coming back around 10 after?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we need to synchronize our watches before we do this.
All right. Can figure out what five minutes is.
Well, you would get a watch with very small numbers.
Always interesting, Wanda, when we're scheduling things in the office, because for some reason our computers are off by five minutes. Our, our phones are off by two minutes, and you have to look at your own cellphone, the mobile phone, to see what the real time is.
And you feel that, you feel that's truly accurate?
I do, because it's updated with the cellular information, so.
Well.
I'm just. All the time.
Hey, Mark, is there a reason you're logged in twice? Just curious. Mark Gabriel, if you're there.
On my screen, he's next to himself.
Yeah, he's next to himself on mine, too.
I'm, I'm, I'm here. So yes, I get told that when I plug my headphones into the computer, people have trouble hearing me. So I call in with my cellphone and I watch on my computer.
You're beside yourself.
I'm beside myself, exactly. I will not put two videos of myself.
You're all watching the time, right? You're going to let me know when we start again? Yes?
Yeah. About 9:14, correct, Chair?
Yeah.
Okay. It is 9:09 right now.
I think we're about at the point where we should resume. So if.
Resume?
Go, start the second application, right? If that makes you feel better.
Good one, Mr. La Place.
Very good.
Thank you. I got the puns coming today, I'll tell you. I'm trying to cheer myself up. Been a heavy week, right?
Very.
Madam Chair, can we, can we assume that when we, when we do resume and start the, the Tiger application that we can, since we have a hard stop at 11 and we need to leave time, yeah, I would say at least maybe 15 minutes to talk about the North Harrison study. I mean, maybe it won't even take that long. All, we're, it's a very simple thing, but I just want to make sure we don't completely run out of time and.
Yeah. And I just want to emphasize about the North Harrison matter. Michael's memo is just for informational purposes. We're not at the point where we're making any decisions or determinations.
Right.
Okay, well, why don't we get started on, on the trustees at Princeton University? This is preliminary and final major site plan. It's Tiger and Athletic Operations. Fitz Randolph and Faculty Road, block 50.01, lot 1B. And.
Madam Chair, I just want to mention that Bruce Affron has his hand up as an attendee and Jerry might want to. I, I don't know. I think there might be a challenge to.
Yeah, I wanted to address that, challenge of jurisdiction. Let me, let me explain what, what happened at the last meeting. I'm sure you all recall. We took jurisdiction purely for purposes of determining that notice was sufficient. Mr. Affron indicated that he had to challenge the jurisdiction of the board that he wanted to make. That was not articulated because it was the end of a very long night. But I think the way we want to handle that, I just want to get from Mr. Affron very, very, very quickly, the basis of what his theory is with respect to, to the jurisdictional issue. I'm assuming that he, he does not believe that what's being proposed is either a permitted principal permit use or permitted accessory use. If that's the case, then I think we decide the jurisdictional issue, in my opinion, only after we hear university's case because we won't even know what, 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 what they're doing until we refer the case. But maybe Mr. Affron can jump in on that.
I'm bringing him over as a panelist for the moment. You're muted, Bruce.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I see I was promoted to a panelist, it says.
Yes.
For the time being.
Flattering nomenclature.
Bruce, did you hear, did you hear what I said about the jurisdictional question?
Yes, I agree fully. I think it would be a little purpose served in trying to decide it without hearing the application.
Okay.
The only thing is, I, I don't need to be on the panel now. Because I don't intend to raise any objections, but if objection arises, I'll just hit my hand raised button. And I appreciate if David would then bring in. During the period for cross examination, you know, obviously I'll need to be fully on the panel.
Right. And, and just so we have a, a frame of reference that the university could use and you, and the board could use in terms of your jurisdictional objection. Is it what I articulated that you don't think it's a permitted, a principal use or a primitive accessory use?
Exactly. And I think in my letter to the board, which I copied to Chris, that was exactly what I said.
Okay.
Permitted use and I don't see it falls under the accessory uses.
Okay.
We have other objections, my clients, but that's the jurisdictional issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
David, are you deleting me from the panel now?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I, I just wanted to make a comment before I do a brief introduction? Yes. It appears that the chat, chat is on and people are putting comments there and we usually don't use chat. We usually disable it. It is my recollection. So we might want to let the public know that, you know, it's not really part of the discourse this evening.
Thank you, Michael.
It may have been disabled now.
Okay.
Is it disabled now?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I asked Mark to disable it. I'm not sure if he's, if he has or not, but it, I think it may have been.
Okay.
It, I mean, I'm still able to access it, but.
You are? Let me see.
Yeah, the ideal would be to have it disabled for the public, but available for.
May be able to work on that. I'll work on that.
Our panelists, right?
Yeah, Tim just posted and it came up.
Okay.
Yeah, I can see what Tim just wrote also.
Due to, due to the hour and the number of members of the community that want to get started on this as well as the university. I'm going to be brief, but what we have before us this evening is another component of the evolving East Campus. As you recall, last year, we, last year, the board had a concept review of the East Campus plans. And this is another element. Tiger is a very clever acronym for thermally integrated geo exchange resource, and that is the name of the facility. This is actually a facility with two uses in it. And the university is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for both the Tiger facility and space for operations for athletics, for the university athletics. So instead of being red, I, I'll note that it's in the E1 zone. Staff had determined that it's a permitted use for this education zone in that heating facilities and athletic facilities are obviously accessory uses on, on a university campus. And that the site's about 4.5 acres. The chair already noted the location of it. It's very close to the location of the soccer stadium that we were just discussing earlier. This is on the east side of Fitz Randolph Road and just north of Faculty Road. So some of the issues that you'll, that are of concern to, that were, were noted by staff and, and will be asked about by the community involved. The appearance of the building and the height of the towers. There's two storage towers that are part of the, of the facility. You'll be hearing details about that from the applicant's presentation. The screening of the facility and if there's, there's any noise generated by, by the operation of the geothermal facility. So I think I'll leave it at that and we can go right to the applicant's presentation if that's okay with the board.
And board, I'm going to go forward with this. Okay, well, let's, let's have the applicant's presentation then.
Mr. Drew, do you want to say anything to begin?
Sure, I, I'll just say thank you, Michael, for the introduction. As you mentioned, this is our next step in the East Campus development. It's a really exciting step in that it creates a geo exchange system that allows us to use the natural temperature of the earth to heat and cool buildings. Just off the bat, this is not a power plant. We're not burning anything. There's no combustion on site. There's no fuel, no water vapor. We're not even extracting anything from the aquifer. The, the loops that we're using to heat and cool are all a closed system. It's, it's, like I said, it's a very exciting project. It's really one of the most environmentally friendly things you can do in terms of heating and cooling buildings. And with that, I think we'll jump right into the presentation, Ron. Would you, and I, I think what we need to do, because this is a new hearing, we'll have to have you qualified or at least sworn in.
Just, just Mr. McCoy at this point?
Yes. Well, do you want us to go through all of our consultants at this point or would you like?
We, we might as well do all of them.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. If all the consultants for the university can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay. If you could go around and say your full name and spell your last name and give your address.
I'll begin. Ron McCoy, university architect, M C C O Y. Mark Gabriel, I see you on the screen. Why don't you go next? You're muted?
I don't see him.
Okay, Jeffrey Graydon, why don't you go?
Jeffrey Graydon, Princeton University Athletic Department.
Kim Jackson?
Kim Jackson, Princeton University Transportation and Parking Services.
George Jackmar?
George Jackmar, B F J Planning, consultant for traffic and parking to the university.
Tom Lequist?
Hi, I'm Tom Lequist, Facilities Engineering.
Ted Borner?
Ted Borner, Director of the Energy Plant.
James Corner?
James Corner, Landscape Architect for Princeton University.
Let's try Mark Gabriel again. It's muted, Mark. For some reason, you're not coming through. We'll go to Chris Longo.
Yeah, Chris Longo, Civil Engineer, V H B.
And Ben Patrick, you're muted there.
Ben Patrick, Office University Architect at Princeton University.
Josh Linkov?
Josh Linkov, Office University Architect.
Justin Gerson? Justin, you're.
Do you guys hear enough?
Yes, we can.
Justin Gerson, Burns and McDonald.
Okay, I think that is the team that we brought with us tonight.
Okay.
Don't worry, I don't think everybody's going to speak.
Ron, you forgot me.
Oh, Julie. How can I do that? How can I do that?
I was just going to say that, yep. Julie, you state your name, please.
Julie Fisher, Acoustical Consultant with NV5.
All these people were sworn in or they're going about three?
Yes. And, and Ron, we're going to start with you. To the extent you provide any architectural testimony, you are licensed in New Jersey and have a current license, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you are currently, your title is University Architect.
That's correct.
Okay. I think we've prepared a PowerPoint and if we can share the screen, we can mark that as exhibit A1.
Okay, I assume you can see that. All right, let me begin and go through this presentation. This slide here, slide two, I know Jerry, you want me to articulate the slide.
Yeah, if you could, Ron, thank you.
Numbers. This one is an overall site plan. It illustrates what Mr. La Place was describing as the evolving East Campus. We've been before this board to talk about the garage, the soccer stadium and practice field we just finished talking about. And now tonight, we're talking here about the athletic ops, the thermal energy storage tanks. We're showing the site location, the East Basin to the east of the facility. We're not touching that East Basin. And then landscape improvements on some of the roadways, east, west and north, north and south. This is the existing condition of, of the site. You'll see the existing baseball and softball fields, Sammy Campbell Field, lot 21, the observatory, which has been removed. Let me point out this building here called the Elementary Particle Lab East, which is currently a facility that Athletic Ops is, is occupying. And again, you'll see the East Basin here on the site between Fitz Randolph and Broadmead. This is a photograph of.
And Ron, just for the record, I just want to identify that you're leaving page three and you're now.
Going to page four. Page four here, this is the photograph of the, that East Elementary Particle Lab East building that I talked about. This is where Athletic Ops is currently located. You can see there, some of their grounds equipment located around the site. Obviously, the location here is functionally proximate next to the athletic fields that they, they, they service. Okay, slide five is just a transition slide asking what is Tiger. Slide six is a orientation to the university's strategies to achieve our goal of, of carbon neutrality by 2046. And you'll see in this chart, the straight, straight line from our carbon footprint in 2016 to the goal of 2046, we have a zero carbon footprint. And you'll see the three, primarily three big wedges of initiatives that are designed to, to get us to that goal. And the first wedge, the blue wedge, the top wedge, that kind of teal, teal blue color is converting the entire campus from steam to hot water. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. So you can see it's an enormous part of our effort to achieve carbon neutrality. The second wedge has to do with potential greening of purchased electricity, either through the additional solar fields that we are adding on the campus or through the greening of the, the grid. And then you'll see a couple smaller wedges in the outer years. These, I think, are potential opportunities, but will obviously as time evolves and technologies gain traction, we'll have more choices into how, as to how we can achieve that last bit of the wedge toward carbon neutrality. So it's, it's extremely significant, the, the importance of this project in achieving these, these goals. I'm now switching to slide seven that talks about what the Tiger building is. It is a building that houses heat pumps and chillers. So it really is best referred to as a heat pump facility. The project includes two thermal or energy storage tanks, one for chilled water, one for hot water. The project includes two thermal or energy storage tanks, one for chilled water, one for hot water. Uh, the overall system distributes hot and chilled water to buildings and returns uh cooled or warm water back to the facility. In the summer cooling mode, it extracts heat from buildings, cooling the spaces, transports the heats to the ground and uses vertical tubes inside the bore holes to store that uh heat into the in the earth. In the winter, warm water is extracted uh and heat pumps uh concentrate the heat and pump pump it to the buildings through a distribution system. Uh, as Christopher said, the heat pumps are electric. All energy comes from the grid. The Tiger is not a power plant. We're we want to emphasize that because the there has been some confusion and people call it a power plant. There is no combustion of any kind, no fuel is on the site, no evaporative cooling. We specifically designed the facility to avoid evaporative cooling, so there's no resulting plumes of baker vapor. Uh, the application does include permission for an emergency uh power generator, but we're not proposing to build that at this time. And there are zero emissions, no boilers, no turbines, no chimneys. There are exhaust vents. They're not exhausting anything other than the air that's circulating through the building. That air that circulates through the building is simply to offset the heat from uh the motors in the heat pumps, and there are no cooling towers. So it is uh really a very simple and clean uh facility, simply housing the heat pumps. Now I'm on Slide eight. Uh, this talks about the location of the different areas of the east campus where we are um drilling the geo exchange bores. And there are three primary sites, one under the soccer field as we've discussed, one under the parking garage as we've discussed. And there will be additional bores underneath the um Tiger facility. You can see that we're um planning about seven hundred and fifteen uh bores in in this uh current period of of uh equipment. This slide nine nine now just talks about the actual shows shows photos got photographs of the heat pump equipment that's inside the facility. There will be no vibration transmitted out from this facility. The heat pumps are on um vibration sensitive footings. It's a ten to twelve inch concrete massing. If there is any vibration, um that's bad for the equipment and it automatically shuts down. So now we're going to slide ten, which is a transition slide to Tiger, and now we're on slide eleven. Slide eleven begins to um look more closely at the boundaries of the site. You can see as we've talked about on the east side of uh Fitz Randolph. The athletic ops building runs parallel to Fitz Randolph and in the southern part of the site shielded from the street by the woodlands that are augmented is the location of the thermal energy storage tanks. Now looking at Slide twelve, a bit more of a detail, uh the upper part of the Tiger Facility, the two two areas shown in blue. Uh, the nor- the northernmost part of part of it is an open air, there's uncovered uh exterior vehicle storage space. So these are walls surrounding uh a yard where where the equipment tractors and uh buggies that serve the athletic facilities are stored. There is a driveway that brings access to that off of uh Fitz Randolph. Uh, and then the next layer uh is a tempered vehicular storage space. So it's it has a not a complete heating and cooling, but it provides it is covered. So it protects and provides a temperate uh climate for some of the equipment, which is temperature sensitive. So it doesn't have to uh start up, so it can start up easily in the mornings and get out to the fields to do the work. The next layer down, moving to the south, is the uh shared spaces for us primarily occupied by the staff from the Athletic Operations Facility. The Tiger Facility will really have staff on an as-needed basis to inspect or to do repairs, but there's no staff for the Tiger Facility that will be um occupying occupying the building. There will be occasional tours and that will be the room, the entrance to the uh west side of the facility is where people will be received and brought in to prepare for the tours of the facility. Moving down to this next part of the facility, the southern part is the chiller room. That is the location where the where the heat pumps are located. And then there's an electrical room at the south corner of the facility. You'll see a loading dock uh that brings access into the southern portion of the building. One of the things that we've changed as the design has evolved is that we've narrowed the driveway into that loading dock so that we can thicken the landscape uh and screen the trees from the views from Fitz Randolph. This this has come uh as a result of conversations with the neighbors. On this diagram, uh you'll see that um there's also a a gray area just to the west of the chiller room. That is uh that has uh glass doors that open so that equipment can be pulled out uh for servicing or for uh replacement. I will point out on the right-hand side of this on Broadmead, there's a double row, a kind of alley of trees. Some of the renderings I'll show later in the presentation are taken from the uh west side of that LA. So you don't see the screening effect of the LA, but that alley of trees will do a very good job of screening views uh in into the site from Broadmead. Now, switching to Slide thirteen, uh this is reiterates just the spaces I just I talked about. You can see the chiller room for Tiger and the uh exterior and tempered spaces for vehicles that are stored for athletic operations. And then the shared space for visitors and for staff from the athletic operations facility. Now, looking at a Slide fourteen, this is a section uh through the facility. So uh taking north-south section, you can see the key plan here. We are in this upper drawing, we are looking uh to the east. You'll see the uh the uh chiller room here. You'll see the thermal energy storage tanks. We have lowered the thermal energy storage tanks from our initial uh meetings with the neighbors. They were, I'll talk a bit about the details of these, but they were once shown at about eighty feet tall. Uh, and the the bottom section is an east-west section where we are looking toward uh Lake Carnegie, towards Faculty Road, taking a section through the Tiger Facility and showing that the tanks are just a little bit taller than the the Tiger Facility. Fitz Randolph Road here is on the right and just the edge of the parking structure is shown here for context. Slide fifteen is a transition slide and Slide sixteen, we're just gonna talk a little bit about. Actually, let me go back and talk about more specifically the heights of those tanks. So um as you see here in this key plan, there's a uh eastern tank and a western tank. The east tank, uh because the contours vary around the perimeter of that tank, the um the 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 height of the tank above those natural about the conic finish contours will be will be between forty-four feet, six inches and forty-eight feet, six inches. And to remind everybody, at once was that at eighty feet, we've we've really engineered it to bring it down to this level. On the west tank, um again with the different conditions of the topography, the lowest end is forty-one foot six above the contour and the higher end is fifty forty-five foot six uh above the contour. The tanks are uh eighty-six feet and four inches to the outside diameter of of the tank. Right now, back to Slide fifteen, the transition slide for circulation and just to talk on Slide sixteen now, a little bit about the overall site circulation. The only traffic coming in and out of the facility of vehicular traffic are the uh equipment for the Athletic Operations Group. And as I mentioned, they come in through the northern northern side through the access driveway. Um, and then the diagram is really just showing the vehicular circulation on site that would serve the garage or drop-off at Caldwell Fieldhouse or Denenzial Pool. And if you remember from the garage application, there's a um uh north-south road here, Stadium Drive, that brings traffic back up to Ivy Lane and and Western Way. Now on Slide seventeen, this shows a detail of that site access in and out of the athletic ops building at the northern end. There will be a pedestrian pathway um uh across the street. This could be for staff. Uh, it could also be for the student group or visitors who might uh from off-campus might park in the garage or on-campus would be coming from from the west. But pretty light uh movement across that, nevertheless, we would have a slight uh crossing there. And then again, showing you the the uh service uh doors that bring equipment in and out as needed. But it's a very irregular uh services. We're talking about years between uh times when major service events happen. And the loading dock, I mean, the the driveway and the loading area at the southwest corner of the facility. Now switching to Slide uh eighteen, a transition slide talking about lighting. And Slide nineteen, just a diagram of the uh lighting in the area. It is predominantly light poles that are street lamps um that have a very low illumination typical of the of the campus lighting. Although we we have specified, we're when we presented and submitted this package, we had not yet specified a new light fixture. We have since specified that fixture. It's a more energy-efficient fixture, has better lighting profile, distributes lights uh better and enhances uh the safety of pedestrians. And we we don't have that with us, but we can certainly share that uh with the board or with with staff. There is um a light at the at the uh entrance to the building, which is a motion sensor light. There are no lights out. There is there's the lights that are out in the storage area around the tanks are on a switch. So they're only there if someone needs to go out and service something when it's dark. So they're they're they would not be on any exterior lights on in this area unless someone was out there servicing uh the the equipment. Now, Slide twenty is a transition slide talking about landscape. And with this slide, I will um introduce uh James Corner, who will walk through the uh landscape plan for this area of the campus.
Yes, thank you, Ron. Um, I I can be brief.
Yes, before you go on, you've been already been sworn in, but I would like to get you qualified. Can you tell us a little bit about your education and your credentials?
Okay, I'm a professionally registered landscape architect, uh registered in New Jersey and fifteen other states in the US. Uh, our office is based in New York City. We've been Princeton's landscape architect for the past two years. I'm a professor at the University of Pennsylvania in landscape architecture. And what else you need?
If you have experience testifying before this board, such as in the last application, so. We'd like to present him as an expert.
Right, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thi- this can be brief. We're really just addressing the landscaping around the facility. We are required uh to replace a hundred and eighteen trees. We're actually uh planting a hundred and nineteen trees. Uh, we have significant uh street trees along uh Fitz Randolph Road. These are a mix of oaks and plains. And you'll notice that around the um around the tanks, uh we have enhanced the planting there significantly with a lot of evergreen trees as well, including pines and hollies. So that we're on the one hand maintaining the woodsy woodland feel of that area as you drive along Faculty Road, but also using the evergreens to help to screen the tanks throughout the year. In front of the building, where you see the sort of teal color, those are also big stormwater areas where the stormwater is collected and channeled into the um i- into tanks below. Uh, next.
And we're on Slide twenty-two.
All of the species in the planting scheme are native. Uh, they grow well together. There's a lot of diversity in terms of species mix. Um, and the planting works at all levels, from grasses and bulbs and shrubs uh to small trees, all the way up to large canopy trees. Next.
Slide twenty-three.
This diagram really just shows that there are significant trees on the site already that have protected root zone areas. Uh, and also uh significant utilities below grade. So we are basically jamming in trees and shrubs and plants in every square foot where we can. Uh, but we are also at the same time respecting the root zone for some of the existing trees and the utility corridors. Next.
Now we're on Slide twenty-four. Thank you, James. Now this is a transition slide to stormwater management. And on Slide twenty-five now, Mark Gabriel can uh present this portion of the presentation.
Mark, you've already been sworn in. Can you please, I would like to get you qualified. Can you please uh go over your credentials?
Sure. My name is Mark Gabriel. I'm a project manager with Niche Engineering. Uh, I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Northeastern University. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as Massachusetts. And I testify with this board for the previous project as well. Anything more?
Uh, we'd like to offer him as an expert.
Thank you. We accept his qualifications.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so uh Slide twenty-five here, we are going to discuss uh the existing and the proposed stormwater management designs uh in the next slide as well. The images here on the left is the existing watershed analysis for the site. It's predominantly a grassed area uh with some woods uh to the south of the site. Uh, the east basin is located uh east of the site and is where that blue D one is. Um, wat- stormwater generally sheets uh overland flow to the east basin uh or uh sheets overland flow uh to Faculty Road. It's then captured in catch basins um and directed to existing drainage uh infrastructure in the roadways uh and discharge just to Lake Carnegie. The two discharge points are D one and D two, as mentioned there. Question came up uh during this uh peer review about the soils type. Uh, while we're talking about the existing conditions here, uh we reviewed the soils information uh with Joe Scoopian and noted that uh two out of the twelve uh tests on site consisted of a soil type of C-type soils. Uh, they, those two were directly adjacent to Fitz Randolph Road and uh were not representative of the other uh ten tests uh on site that indicated uh predominant presence of D-type soils. Uh, additionally, throughout this uh the east campus site in this project, the geotechnical engineer uh concluded that the uh predominant presence of D-type soils uh in their findings. Um, on the right here is the uh proposed uh conditions, including the new facility there generally in the middle, paved areas, walkways and associated utilities, uh discharging to um and it the same areas, the D one and the D two. Uh, if we can move to Slide twenty-six. Slide twenty-six uh here, talking about the stormwater design. And with the stormwater design is a combination of both uh structural and non-structural stormwater management strategies with best management practices. Uh, with the use of low-impact development design and green infrastructure techniques were used to mitigate changes and runoff, promote recharge where feasible and provide water quality treatment. Uh, this design prevents the generation of stormwater and non-point source pollution by protecting the existing stormwater basin uh to the east uh and the adjacent wooded areas uh to the south, disconnecting uh stormwater flow pass, uh treating and promoting recharge of stormwater at its source uh and protecting uh the natural processes of stormwater. Uh, stormwater management for the site includes a stone system around the tanks which is in uh that pink color around the gray circles just south of the facility. Subsurface chambers uh that Jim mentioned previously, uh west of the facility, they're in that blue color and also just north of the facility as well. Uh, and a bio-retention area to the northwest of the facility in the uh green color there. Uh, each of those facilities provide uh treatment and stormwater mitigation. Uh, the treatment for the driveway uh areas to the north, uh closest to athletic ops areas is uh provided uh by the bio-retention facility. And for the uh driveway to the south, excuse me, is provided by a combination of a manufactured treatment device and the subsurface uh storage system as well. A comment came up in the P E C review about the percentage of which goes where. Uh, so about thirty percent of the vehicular paved services, service areas goes to bio-retention facility uh for primary treatment and about uh seventy percent of the vehicular paved areas are pre-treated in the manufactured treatment device and the bio-ret- in the uh subsurface system. Uh, the rooftop area for the facility is directly discharged uh to the stormwater system uh west of the building. Uh, the stormwater systems are all proposed to be open bottom to promote recharge, even though it is D-type soils. Again, they're open bottom to promote recharge, but not accounting for that recharge. Again, they're open bottom to promote recharge, but not accounting for that recharge in the calculations. They're providing the treatment and the stormwater mitigation. The controlled stormwater discharges will happen to the same discharge locations we discussed on the previous slides in the predevelopment conditions. Lastly, just two points here. There were a couple peer review comments. Well, there are a few peer review comments from Joe Scoopian relative to times of concentration, separating runoff volume computations, updating the nonstructural strategies point system, inclusion of some data, inclusion of a TSS removal figure, and a water service elevation table. We've updated the hydrologic calculations. We've met with Joe on this project. We feel that the revised model, although with minimal revisions, has satisfied his comments and will be including some of this updated information here in the final stormwater report. We don't have any issue with that. And then we also received some comments on the previous pavement and rainwater harvesting from PEC. As an alternate to the permeable pavers and the porous asphalt, the project instead is treating and managing stormwater using the bio retention and promoting infiltration through open bottom systems, which are comparable to these other two technologies. And again, earlier I spoke about having that open bottoms design. Rainwater harvesting was considered for the East Campus projects, including the Tiger project. And, you know, we do understand the benefits of rainwater collection. And it's just not being pursued for this project. The project, however, will conserve the water through the adaptive vegetation design that doesn't require irrigation after establishment. And that's what I have on slide twenty-six.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Slide twenty-seven is a transition slide to sound levels. And on the next slide, I'm going to introduce Julie Fisher and let her explain the acoustic analysis of the project. But before I do that, I wanted to acknowledge on behalf of the university that we know that there's a lot of sensitivity around the construction sound associated with the drilling that has been going on on the site. Indeed, there's always neighborhood concerns about construction, even hammering a nail. A typical occurrence in a residential construction produces a DBA reading of one hundred and twenty. Recognizing the impact of our drilling activities, I just wanted to explain to the board a little bit about the mitigation steps that we've been taking throughout the throughout the construction phase. Beginning in the summer of two thousand and twenty, we shifted from a noisier air hammer drill rig to a quieter mud rotary drill rig. We hired a sound consultant to provide recommendations for reducing sound during the construction period. They've produced two reports. We've redirected soil hauling trucks to Alexander and Washington Road instead of south to Harrison, instead of south Harrison, in order to avoid community disruption. We've installed sound blanket materials at the north and east construction fences to reduce sound in the direction of the neighbors. We instituted three times daily sound measurements at multiple points in the neighborhood. Then, beginning in the fall of two thousand and twenty and going until today and until the completion, we've placed additional sound blankets at each rig with excavation. We've repositioned drill rigs to the north in order, to the south, in order to direct noise away from the neighbors. We've hung blankets from lifts to control noise at the northeast of the construction site. We've adjusted the drilling time Monday through Friday to eight AM to six PM, in other words, starting later than the code allows. We've hosted health department site visit. Health personnel agreed that we've gone above and beyond in our strategies to reduce the sound impact on the neighbors. We have retrofitted dump trucks with a broadband signal of a swoosh in lieu of the beeping as a backup alarm. We've restricted worker access to the site until seven AM. We've temporarily employed a fuel cell to power the construction trailers on the site in lieu of diesel generator. That cell was removed after permanent power was installed on December eleventh of two thousand and twenty. We installed new sound mitigation wall system for the drill rigs on December fourth. We hired third-party consultants to install full-time sound metering at forty-four Hartley and at one sixty-eight Fitz Randolph. And we've provided web access to both those residents to review instantaneous sound data. We've installed additional sound blankets blankets to cover all east fencing at the garage and the soccer. So I just wanted to give that as a background. That's, those are, we know those are significant impacts on the neighborhood. They're they're not part of this application. But I just wanted to share with everybody the work that we've been doing. And if more work is required, we have a lot of people who are actively engaged consistently with the neighborhood. And we will continue to be very responsive to concerns as they come up. So with that, then, on slide twenty-eight, I'll ask, introduce Julie Fisher and let her go through the next set of slides.
Sure. Should I give my credentials before?
Yes, Julie, I believe you have already been sworn in. But I'd like to have you qualified. Can you talk a little about your credentials?
Sure. My education is that I have a Bachelor's of Science in Physics from Purdue University and a Master's of Science in Building Science with Concentration in Architectural Acoustics from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. I am a member of the Institute of Noise Control Engineering and the Acoustical Society of America, and I've been an acoustical consultant for over fifteen years.
Madam Chair, we'd like to present her as an expert in the field.
Right, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much.
Sure. So starting on slide twenty-eight, this slide depicts location of the Tiger Building with respect to the overall site plan. Including on this slide are also five locations where measurements were recorded to capture both evening and daytime ambient sound levels. Location one represents the west side of the site. Location two represents the U-NOW childcare facility. Location three represents the west side of the site. Location four represents the nearest residential property line. And location five represents the south side of the site. These measurements were recorded on January nineteenth and November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty. Daytime ambient noise levels were in the forty-five to fifty DBA range with discrete events such as car passbys and helicopter flyovers in the range of sixty to sixty-five DBA. Evening ambient noise levels were in the forty to forty-five DBA range. The New Jersey Noise Code states that noise levels from the Tiger facility cannot be louder than sixty-five DBA during the day and fifty DBA at night at residential property lines surrounding the site. As will be illustrated on the following slides, even with all equipment running, noise levels at the residential property lines will not be higher than the New Jersey Noise Code and, in fact, will be at or below ambient noise levels and lower than the New Jersey Noise Code requires. If we could advance to slide twenty-nine. This slide represents the predicted noise levels due to the Tiger facility on the first day it is operational with all equipment running. The types of equipment included in the study are exhaust fans, pumps, and chillers. There are several pieces of equipment, two chillers and seven pumps, that will not be installed on day one and will be added if needed at a later date. These have not been included in this slide. For reference, daytime ambient noise levels are noted in green and evening ambient noise levels are noted in orange. The blue numbers are the predicted noise levels with all day one equipment operating. Daytime ambient represents the noise levels on site during the day without any discrete events such as car passbys or helicopters. Evening ambient represents the noise levels in the evening around seven PM, when residents would most likely be utilizing their outdoor spaces. Both the daytime and evening ambient noise levels are below what is required by the New Jersey Noise Code regulations, i.e., New Jersey Noise Code requires sixty-five DBA during the day and the daytime ambient is forty-five to fifty DBA, whereas the New Jersey Noise Code requires fifty DBA at night, starting at ten PM, and the evening ambient is forty to forty-five DBA. As can be seen on this slide, predicted noise levels are below the New Jersey Noise Code. In fact, not only are they within the code requirements, but at location four, the nearest residential property line, the sound is below daytime ambient and equal to evening ambient. And at location two, south of U-NOW, the noise level is equal to the daytime ambient. In other words, by the time Tiger's sound level reaches these locations, the sound is no greater than the existing noise levels during the day slash evening. Other locations, one, three, and five, are on Princeton University's property and are therefore not subject to the Noise Code as it only applies for residential property lines. Please also note that the colors on this map are only meant to clarify where the various noise levels will occur. They do not represent in any way where the New Jersey Noise Code is met and where it is exceeded. So advancing to the next slide, slide thirty. This slide shows the predicted noise levels with all equipment operating, including what is planned for the future. This includes the addition of the two chillers and seven pumps. There is not a significant increase in noise between this graphic and the day one graphic as the equipment that is controlling the noise levels and which is located closest to the acoustical louver will be installed day one. The pumps installed at a future date are further from the louver and therefore have less of an impact. The pumps in the facility are the dominant noise source for the site. As with day one noise levels, predicted noise levels at location four and U-NOW, which is location two, are below what is required by the New Jersey Noise Code. And not only do the predicted noise levels adhere to the code, but they are at or below ambient noise levels for daytime. Slide four. So this is slide, sorry, slide thirty-one. Slide four of the acoustics. This slide is the same as the previous slide, except that it also shows noise levels that are a result of the proposed future generator. The generator will be located between the TES tanks and will be provided with an enclosure that will limit noise levels of the generator to seventy DBA at twenty-three feet. This generator will be for emergencies only and will only be tested once a month. The generators only run approximately twenty hours per year for testing purposes. As can be seen on this graphic, the TES tanks provide a good acoustical barrier between the generator and location four, the nearest residential property line. As with previous two scenarios, noise levels at location four will be below the New Jersey Noise Code and will be at or below ambient noise levels. In all three scenarios, there are no locations off the university property that exceed the New Jersey Noise Code, even considering the more restrictive nighttime code limit of fifty DBA.
Okay, thank you, Julie. I'm going to move now to the renderings. This is slide thirty-two, transition slide, and now on slide thirty-three, just to describe the appearance and character of the facility. Here, we're basically have our back to the soccer stadium. So we're looking south and east across the site at the primary entrance to the to the Tiger facility. So this is where the the shared staff entrance would be. On the right-hand side, you see a little circular window, and then further down, you see a bank of windows that give views into the chilling room, and I'll talk a little bit about that. You will notice also the upper level of the Tiger plant that brings more daylight into the facility in a in a bird-safe glass that's located up in that location. Now, as we're moving further south on the site, so we're just south of the entrance drive to Jadwan Drive and to the parking structure. Looking across the landscape, you'll see we're in the kind of thick of the woodland trees that James explained up and down Fitz Randolph. Looking at the the tank here and the evergreens that are that are planted along with existing trees in that location. Here you see on the Tiger facility itself, these are the large glass doors that open up for the occasional need to access equipment and to repair or replace that that equipment. We do think that because this is a showcase technology and because it is a leading-edge technology in terms of achieving carbon neutrality, that we want to showcase those those pieces of equipment. And so we think that'll be a sort of kind of exciting place to look into the facility. Now, switching to slide thirty-five, we just showed this for reference to represent the tanks at the height they were in our first meeting with the neighbors. As I mentioned earlier, since that presentation, we've worked very hard at refining the engineering calculations, tightening the sort of degrees of of insurance that we needed for the amount of water held in the tanks so they could run on a more economical cycle and sunk the sunk the tanks into the ground as far as practical until they reached the water table. And so this shows the difference from that we've been able to achieve through a variety of engineering solutions to reduce the height of the tanks. Now on slide thirty-six, this is just highlighting the height of the glass top of the Tiger building, showing the comparison of the tanks relative to the to the Tiger facility to show that they're fairly consistent and that the tanks really are, by all those techniques that I mentioned, nestled into the into the treetops. Sprab, now on slide thirty-seven, Sprab had asked for more information about the opening glass doors. So this is just a slide that shows what those glass doors would be like. They're in hydraulic hinges that push the doors out, that make a kind of clear opening so that equipment can come in and out of the facility. This is obviously not a Tiger facility. This is someone's nice house or something like that. Now, on slide thirty-eight, another more close-up view, looking at the entrance to the Tiger facility and a window into the chilling room shown on the right. In terms of, now it's slide thirty-nine, in terms of the thermal energy storage tanks, in addition to refining the engineering to reduce the size and bulk of the tanks, what we've done with our architectural framework ZGF is design a very careful screening system by aluminum panels, which you can see here are organized into horizontal bands with shadow joints and also a kind of slight tonal range in the horizontal banding. And all that works to minimize the appearance of verticality, emphasizing the appearance of horizontality. The color is a kind of recessive color that sits back into the shadows of the woodlands and altogether makes the appearance of the tanks lighter and more diaphanous. Now on slide forty, I remember that I showed the site plan earlier and I pointed to the LA of trees along Broadmead. So we're now inside the East Basin area away from that LA of trees. So the LA of trees would have actually made it difficult to show this view of the building. So we decided to take the rendering to the west of that LA of trees. We're looking at the eastern facade of the Tiger facility. The regional stormwater basin is in the foreground. You can see that we're have a sort of robust planting that James explained on the east side of the facility. And then we have the, one of the tanks shown in this rendering. And the white dashed line again illustrates the changes we've made to the size of that tank through the refinement of the engineering assumptions. Now we're just swinging a little bit further, looking toward the south and the the west to show a very similar view of the facility. Now on slide forty-two, there was some conversation, and I think one of our recent meetings with the with the neighbors about this particular view from the corner of Broadmead and Faculty Road. So we wanted to, we promised that we would come back and show what the what the how the tanks would appear in the context of these existing evergreen trees. And so this is the existing site condition, looking to the the west from that intersection. Slide forty-three, transitions and shows a view of the proposed tanks relative to the height of existing trees in that location. So it's just peeking up above the treetops in this particular view. And then slide forty-four, we're taking, shows the shows the slide in a winter scene. Obviously, being able to take advantage of the evergreening, evergreen trees provide screening throughout the the seasons in this particular view. Slide forty-five is the final slide, and that concludes our presentation.
Questions now from board members to professionals or what what are we doing now?
Sfor, do you have any other witnesses?
Oh, we do not.
Ah, that's the end.
I'm sorry.
Waiting for.
I was waiting for the chair.
Yes. The presentation's done.
Nice balance there. I have a question. Can I start?
Yes, please.
So I I just have a general question in terms of the mechanics of the geothermal system and how it will relate to the whole entire campus. So is this system going to be heating and cooling the whole entire campus?
Good question.
Could you talk a little bit more about how it all works?
Well, I'm going to give the simple answer to the question. This is heating and cooling the facilities that we're building on the eastern part of campus. But let me introduce Tom Lightquest and have him describe. And have him describe how the entire system is interconnected for the, for the larger campus. So Tom, could you answer that question?
So Chris, do I need to be qualified?
I just muted my mic. Yes, let's, let's just, let's just give your title. And, and, and your, your. Your degrees.
So I'm Tom Lightquist, I'm Executive Director of Facilities Engineering and Campus Energy. I have a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from Penn State. And Masters from University of Connecticut and Professional Engineering License in New Jersey.
Thank you.
So. We are in the process of renovating the west plant to be a heat pump facility too. So the west plant will heat and cool the western side of campus and Tiger will heat and cool the eastern side. They are interconnected with underground chill water pipe and hot water pipe. So that one plant can back up another and they can both help on peak heating and cooling days. Did you need any more detail than that?
No, I don't. I think that's fine.
Fine. Yeah, thanks.
Zenon, did that answer?
Yeah, I mean, I guess so. I, I kind of didn't catch everything, but um, it, it, it makes sense. So it's, it's going to cover partial, partially. The, the campus.
But they are interconnected.
Okay. Okay.
Underground piping.
Cool.
Okay, yes, dude.
Yeah, I just want to comment and thank Ron for showing that graph. About the. Role this plays in achieving the university's. Transition to a net zero carbon future in twenty forty six. You know, I just want to emphasize essentially this is the biggest single thing. That they can do. Because with the, with the greening of the energy, it's partly stuff that the university will do, but it's partly the greening of the grid in general. So. This is just so important to the future, you know, of the planet and I'm very appreciative. That you're undertaking this.
Thank you. It's a big commitment.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I also appreciate your going over the, the efforts you've made to mitigate the noise. Situation. I have a few stormwater related questions. I guess for Mr. Corner or Mr. Gabriel or both. I'm curious about whether the, maybe you explain this and I just missed it, whether the. Bio retention. Part of the system is connected to. The underground storage. Does it go first through? The bio retention and overflow go to underground storage or is underground storage completely separate?
The latter, yes. So the bio retention facility along the north side of the project allows the driveway. Areas to sheet and go into that facility and be treated. Through there, right? Then it would go percolate through the material and it gets piped out of there over towards the east basin. The underground.
Okay, okay. So that's how it's connected to the east base. I mean, that's how stormwater on this site is connected to the east basin is the overflow from the bio retention.
For that facility it is, correct. For the other facilities, for the other subsurface facilities. It's captured, it's treated and it's sent actually over towards. The southwest corner of the site, sorry, southeast corner of the site to existing drainage system. And I don't know why my camera's not working. I thought it was.
And presumably discharged at a, a very controlled, slow rate.
Old rate.
Underground system.
Correct. Both systems provide a controlled rate that meets the regulatory requirements.
Yeah, yeah. Can you talk a little bit about why? I mean, I assume you felt the, that the paved areas here were inappropriate for permeable pavement. And that, well, maybe I shouldn't assume that. But can you talk a little bit about why you chose not to use permeable pavement for the driveway areas or walkways?
Sure, I can talk about that, but I did notice Ted Bora was raising his hand to that question.
Really quickly, oh, Energy Plant Director. Masters in.
You're, you're actually not testifying as an expert, so you don't have to give your qualifications.
Yeah.
Yeah, we run heavy vehicles as Ron McCoy described before, every once in a while. We have a very large thing. It may be a few years, it may be several years. But we can run very heavy loads over this and we didn't feel that it was really going to lend itself to. The previous pavement because that doesn't tend to carry the weight.
And that goes for the, not just the walkways, but also the driveway. Areas at the north and south ends, the loading area and the, and the entrance to the.
My comments specifically.
And covered parking.
Yeah, it's, my comment's really more about the two areas that can have vehicle access, not the pedestrian.
Okay, okay.
And, and the athletic ops area is operational area where you don't, you know, sometimes you'll have sand or, you know. Different items where you don't want a permeable driveway.
It would complicate things for sure.
And let me just repeat.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And let me just repeat from my testimony earlier is that we are promoting that similar type of function with these open bottom systems providing that, that recharge. It's just you're not. Instead of forest pavement, you're doing bio retention or open bottom stormwater facility. Okay, sorry, Ron, go ahead.
Well, Madam Chair, I wanted to just introduce or, or go to a different, slightly different topic. It's really just a question of nomenclature. I think that. Sometimes we use, we, we should be calling this a geo exchange system. I think sometimes the word geothermal gets used and I wanted to ask Tom, since he just spoke. To clarify the difference, this is not geothermal, which is one, one, one type of technology. This is a geo exchange, which is a very different type of technology. So for the benefit of the board and others, could you explain the differences between those?
Well, geothermal is used in places where the earth is very hot. So Iceland has a lot of geothermal. The west has a lot of geothermal. I actually stayed in a hotel in Reno for a conference. Entire place was heated by just pumping water through the ground. The ground was so hot, they could take that heat directly without a heat pump. Into the hotel. The earth here is not hot enough to do that. So what we have to do is we, we exchange heat and then we use the heat pumps to concentrate the heat and take it from. A low temperature of about fifty five degrees and we pump it up to a hundred and forty degrees. And then in the summer, we're taking heat out of the buildings and we're putting it into the earth. So we're really storing the heat from the summer so that we can use it in the winter. So we're exchanging heat into the earth and out of the earth to heat and cool our buildings.
Those, those geos change boards, boards are a closed system, right?
They're completely closed. The, the water that goes through the heat pumps and the thing goes into tubes that are in the earth. And those tubes come back to the plant. They, they never let the water go into the earth and we don't take any water out of the earth.
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Chow.
Related to that, Mr. Lightquist, I guess they're called chillers, but they're really heat pumps, right, that you have in the room there?
So, unfortunate term that's in the industry and it's a little confusing. You're right, they're heat pumps. The chiller word comes out of it, the old views for a big machine that's used for cooling. That same type of machine is now used for heating and the word came across and it's very confusing. It's a heat pump with water on both sides.
And I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to get toward the acoustic analysis. The, the report said that it was like eighty five D B from the, from the chillers slash heat pumps. Is there an option to use magnetic? Chillers or magnetic bearing chillers which are quieter?
They are quieter. We are using some inside of the engineering quad. They tend to be small machines. These machines are very large and to my knowledge, there are no mag bearing chillers in the size range. I wish there were. I really, because it simplifies a lot of the payments.
And then, okay, so another question about the operation. I saw that there's four chillers in, or four heat pumps in the building. Given the load profile through the year, when are they being loaded the most and, and for how long? I assume it's summertime is your, your peak. And then I'm, I'm trying to get to understanding the note, the noise profile. At the P, at the extreme times of the year.
So currently we run our chill water plant. We, we run most of the machines in the summer when it's hazy, hot and humid out. And the same thing's going to apply to this, this Tiger facility. When it's really hot out, we need a lot of cooling. So we will be running the machinery at that point. But since it's a heat pump and we're using it for heating too, that same condition will apply in the, in the really cold days of winter. We will be running it full out.
Okay, and are they, they're run overnight to chill the water or heat the water for the TES? And so the, their, their peak load is at night when you're trying to avoid peak prices or are you, are they just running steadily through the day?
In the heating, in the heating season, I anticipate the heat pumps will be on the most in the morning when we're warming up the campus. Because at night, we, we turn, we set back the temperatures and in buildings so that the buildings all get a little cooler to save energy. And a lot of people do the same thing in the house. And then in the morning, we have to heat the buildings up. That's, that's our biggest heating loads. Is in the morning. That's when we'll be running those heat pumps, stuff artists, and we'll probably be taking hot water out of the tank at the same time to supplement that. That, that's part of the reason for the town.
So the coldest, coldest time of the year in the morning is going to be the noisiest time for, for the, for the plant.
Yeah. And, and in the summer, we will be running.
Yeah, the summer as well, the mornings.
I, I, I'm, I think we would have to have our sound expert. Comment on that. And I think what Tom could say is that, you know, inside the plant, you have the most activity. I don't know how much it actually changes. The levels you have, we have to have our consultant talk about that.
Sure. To, to weigh in on that, I, I do want to clarify that our models that you have seen in our presentation are with all equipment running at a hundred percent. So any reductions in that running of equipment is going to be lower noise levels than what you have seen in the models that we presented. What we found is that there's not a significant difference, especially with the chillers slash heat pumps. In running all four at once or running two at once. This has to do with the fact that they're set back quite far from the louvers themselves, which are the. Weak point in the facade facing the residential neighborhoods. So. As I said, you know, the models that we've provided are with everything running at full capacity.
Thank you. Um, and I guess one last question of like chillers, they have a certain sound profile. And when they're running, I guess the kind of lower frequencies are at a higher decibel. How does that play out at distance? When, when, let's say when all the equipment is running.
Sure.
Is there like a low, low hum that's more discernible at distance?
Sure. So. We have taken into account the frequency profile of the chillers within our calculations. The noise levels that we present in our presentation are D B A numbers. D B A is a single number rating that is based on an A weighting scale. The A weighting scale is based on how the human ear hears and the human ear does not hear low frequency noises as well as. If you were using a straight spectrum, so there's more weighting at low frequencies. But at the end of the day, our model does take into account frequency spectrum and the, particularly the frequency profile of the chillers themselves.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for Julie as well, because I, I think it's important to get this on the record. Julie, can you talk about the. The louvers, which you just mentioned are weak point and the, the role they play in this project and how they've been specified and, and what they are.
Sure. And thanks, Joe, for bringing that up. So the louvers on the building are not typical louvers. They are acoustically rated louvers, which means that they are perforated. And that they control sound better than a typical louver would. And in particular, they control sound better at the lower frequencies. So that is one of the major. Acoustical mitigation methods that we are using on this project to address those lower frequency spectrums that the chillers would generate.
So I would like to stress to the board and to the public that the louver that's been specified here is a, a big deal acoustical louver. It's not. It's not lip service. It's eighteen inches thick and it is. It attenuates about twenty decibels or more at mid to high frequencies. Where a lot of the children noise is escaping from the building and. Without that louver, we would have a, a sound problem for this project. And so it's important. And as we carried out our review for the municipality that, that we ensured that that louver was part of the design because it is absolutely necessary for nighttime code compliance at the neighborhood.
Zenon, are you? No, okay. Anyone else? Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment. To thank the university for. Re-engineering this to minimize as much as possible the visual impact. And a, a question, I guess for Ron about the, the tank material. It, it looks like we're from, just from a visual standpoint, it looks like there are three. Different shades of gray that are happening here. And that's meant to be to match sort of the facade of the athletic operations entries. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, I'm going to have to, I think there are either three or four shades of gray and see if someone in our, in our team can correct me, but. They're, yeah, they're, they, they, they're meant to complement the, one of those colors will be the same colors that we're using on the Tiger. The others are kind of, you know, sort of. Get that sort of variety and give it a bit more liveliness rather than a kind of dull singularity.
And is any, was any thought given to a different color palette or is this, are these the materials that, that are sort of out of the box?
Well, not out of the box. And yes, we, we, we've, we've came into the color conversation with a sort of open mind. I think that. Fundamentally, we wanted to be. In a, a kind of recessive or quiet color tone. So as I've mentioned, I think it's important, even though I think that. You know, I would argue that they're elegantly designed, but I know there's an intense sensitivity to them. So I think rather than try to. You know, fight that point, I wanted them to be, or we wanted them to be into the shadows of the landscape and not, not be prominent. So I think that really leans toward this, this type of color solution.
And, and just following up on that, this is the color that they will always be or is there? And is this a material that, that can be refreshed or washed or painted?
It's a, it's a, it's a powder coated aluminum. So this is a baked on finish and it'll have, I don't know what the lifespan is, but it's a. You know, it probably has a thirty to forty year lifespan, in which case it would have to be probably replaced, but it doesn't patina. It's not a natural material that's. But it doesn't patina. It's not a natural material that's, that's going to be patining. It's going to, it's going to have the factory finish on it.
And it wouldn't be made available to an aspiring artist to wrap it in color for a temporary art project perhaps? I, I'm kidding. That, thank you. The main, the main point was about the visual appearance. I think everyone was rightly shocked when presented with eighty, eighty feet. And, um, I think that this is a, this is a pretty good solution.
Appreciate that. And I think when we first presented it, um, it was early in the concept phase and we hadn't, didn't have an idea about what the material would be like. And we had a choice going into that first neighborhood presentation. Do we color it a, a gray, which made it difficult to read? And it looked like we were trying to hide it. Or did we color it kind of a, a kind of off white that made it very prominent? So that it, so it'd be clear that what it was. And it was shockingly large when it was in a light color. So I think that helped us verify that the recessive color was a more appropriate solution.
Thanks, Ron.
I have a question for Joe Keefe. Joe, did I swear you in for this application?
No, you didn't. Do you have to do that? And I have to say everything again?
Yes.
Yeah, just if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony that you have given and that you will give, uh, will be the, the truth.
I do.
So it's one or firm. Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to mention that we have a number of hands up amongst the members of the public. So.
You want to start on, on?
You know, if the board's satisfied or had, had their say, we could start taking public comment.
David, um, I just also want to mention, there's a question in, uh, question. Someone had submitted a written question and indicating that they have to leave soon. And I'm, I'm not sure. Do you want to read that now or read that later?
I think, um, if, how long is it?
I'm, it's an anonymous, uh, question. We can't take it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Too bad.
Yeah. So the, the first person who has their hand up is Tariq Shahbender. I'm going to bring him over.
Okay.
I believe you probably can see me and hear me?
Yes. Mr. Shahbender, I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes.
Thanks. If you could state your full name and spell your last name and give your address.
Sure. Good evening. Uh, my name is Tariq Shahbender. First name is T A R I K. Last name is Shahbender. S H A H B E N D E R. Excuse me. Um, my, my home is located at seventy Hartley Avenue, which is approximately one thousand feet from the proposed Tiger Building and the holding tank location. I have a number of comments to make regarding this new proposed central utility facility and the associated tanks. First, I would like to thank the town of Princeton for providing this forum to review town projects. I know you folks expend a great deal of energy looking out for the taxpaying residents of our town. I want to commend you for your efforts. I would also like to thank the university for sharing their plans and project information with the community and for being willing to adapt and adjust based on community input. Now onto some of my comments. First, although the university has given this project a really nice Princeton name, the Tiger Building, in reality, this building is a central utility facility. It will house industrial equipment, including chillers, heat pumps, pumps and very large exhaust fans. All of this equipment creates noise. The question becomes how much noise? In order to determine how much noise this power facility will create, the university had a study done. I assume the university hired this consultant and I suspect they paid them handsomely for the information they wanted to receive. From what I can ascertain, the Sexton Report attempts to identify the current noise levels in our residential neighborhood and then compare that to their predicted or projected noise levels once the plant is running. Let's look at how they developed the baseline ambient noise level. Excuse me. They developed the current noise levels by doing a site survey. These site surveys were done on January nineteenth from twelve thirty to four PM and on Saturday evening, November fourteenth from seven to eight PM. From the three and a half hour measurement period on the nineteenth, ambient noise levels were established for the daytime period. In my opinion, that's a pretty short and limited test period. Even more concerning is the fact that a one hour test period on Saturday evening generated the evening ambient level. Again, a pretty short time period and it wasn't even done at night. Yet it is what they're using to develop the nighttime or evening standard. I find the ambient noise level analysis to be poor at best. And it makes me believe that their predictions for future noise levels may be suspect. As we all know, predictions are really just a best guesstimate. I live too close to this proposed facility to rely on predictions that are incorrect. With no identified recourse, we need to ensure that the unit, that, I'm sorry. I live too close to this proposed facility to rely on predictions with no identified recourse in the event that predictions are incorrect. We need to ensure that if the noise levels prove to be incorrect, the university will take steps to immediately resolve the situation, even if it means taking the plant out of service. Recourse must be part of the town approval process. Another point I would like to mention is the fact that the Sexton Report recommends the university ignores the Princeton noise code on loud, continuous or excessive noise. They recommend that the project adheres to the New Jersey noise code for commercial, industrial or community service facilities. I believe the recommendation to ignore our town ordinance is because this plant will be running continuously. The noise it emits will be continuous. Unlike a passing car or truck, or like an occasional helicopter flyover, this noise will not stop. The university needs to take the lead and move forward employing noise mitigation best practices adhering to our local noise ordinances and must help reduce noise pollution rather than creating additional noise pollution. Lastly, I would like to comment on the two industrial tanks that are part of this project. I find the idea of putting two petrochemical plant sized tanks in our residential neighborhood to be ridiculous. These tanks are massive, eighty-six feet in diameter and forty-five to sixty feet tall, depending on how deep they're placed in the ground. In the event this project moves forward, the university needs to come up with a way to completely conceal these tanks. I know there may be some technical challenges and some increased costs, but the town cannot let these tanks be installed unless they're completely concealed. Not just painted green and gray. They need to be concealed or placed elsewhere. In closing, a quick summary of my points. One, we need to call this project what it is, plain and simple. It's a central utility plant with the associated mechanical equipment and tanks found in an industrial setting. It is being built in our residential neighborhood. Two, the section report, which I believe was commissioned for and paid for by the university, is full of projections and predictions that may or may not come true. We need to be sure that these protections are in place to protect the residents of our community and ensure that these predictions are accurate and in the best interest of the community. Three, I believe that the university has to adhere to our local town noise code. The drone or continuous sound from this plant will be detrimental to our neighborhood and community. And four, I believe the university has to come up with a way to completely conceal these massive storage tanks that are part of the project. Do we want a major entrance to our community to reflect an industrial setting? Lastly, I, I didn't mention this earlier in my comments. As a resident of Hartley Avenue, we have lived near the sports complex for over twenty-five years. Palmer Stadium, Jadwin Gym, Clark Field have been here for as long as I can remember. And I've lived in Princeton since the early nineteen sixties. This is and has been where the sports complex area is for the university. We're okay with that. Now we're being asked to allow a commercial sized central utility plant to be built in our neighborhood. We are not okay with that. This area has never been an industrial area for the university. If this project is permitted to proceed, this plant must be silent and the tanks must be concealed. Again, many thanks to the planning board of the university for facilitating these discussions. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you.
The next individual with their hand up is Bernard Chazelle. Bring them over.
Hello.
Hello. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So it's one or firm. Please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address.
I'm Bernard Chazelle. Bernard, like the dog. Chazelle, C H A Z E L L E. I live on one, two, A Broadmead. Now, I'm shocked that we've heard an hour long presentation about this plant without the word children ever mentioned. This plant is being built right next to a nursery school. This is remarkable. Now, uh, in this context, let me show you two documents that I have here. Okay? Two documents from Sexton Group, one from March, the other from November or December, very recent. These two documents are contradictory. They have different numbers. They vary widely. What happened? Did Sexton make a mistake? If so, can they please tell us about it? And if not, uh, then was the plant's design changed perhaps? Which would explain why the numbers are different. We need to know.
Mr. Chazelle, Mr. Chazelle, could you identify the documents by date or?
Yeah. Oh, by the way, all the documents I will cite, I'm very, very happy to send them to any of you to put them online. To, actually, the document that I'm citing right now is online on the Princeton facilities website. It's the Sextons, the two Sexton groups, uh, the two Sexton group reports, excuse me. And they are contradictory and we need to understand why they are, they contradict themselves. Now.
If you could, if you could send a copy of that to the planning board secretary, that, that would be great.
I definitely, on page three of, uh, the second report, it says that the night ambient noise is between forty and forty-five. This is a point that has been made before where I live on Broadmead and I measure the ambient noise at night all the time. It's a kind of a hobby of mine. Right now it's thirty-five. It's not anywhere close. Okay? So it's a question of trust. How can we trust numbers that completely seem, uh, wrong? Now, both reports agree on one number and I want to talk about this just, it's going to be very quick, just a few minutes. It is the noise right at the UNA playground. As we saw on the map, the plant touches in nursery school. Okay? Now, the noise at that plant, uh, at the playground of UNA is fifty-three dB. Fifty plus fifty, which is what it says, this is the upper limit, fifty plus fifty is fifty-three. Okay? Now, this is very bad. Okay? The W health organization recommends that the background noise in a school should not exceed thirty-five dB. I'm, I will certainly send you a link to that. Now, between thirty-five and fifty-three, I want to know whether the UNA administrators, and I'm surprised they're not in the panel, are aware of that? And can we have their written statement that the UNA administrators are okay with this incredibly wide deviation from official health recommendations? Now, going green is a wonderful thing. I have nothing against the plant per se. It's the location. The location is a catastrophe. The children of the community should not be paying the price for going green. We can all agree that going green is great. The children should not be the one paying the price. And we, so we deserve answers from the expert. Now, here's the thing. Okay? This is not like we had a debate and somehow Princeton disagrees. Now, there's been no debate. There's been no argument. No one from the university has been willing to make an assessment on the harm of, of the children. Not a single report, nothing. We have, for nine months, we have been talking to everybody in that hall. Nobody will address this issue. As somebody who's been at Princeton University for thirty-five years, I'm completely shocked. Okay? Princeton has not been able to mention any other example where a major plant like this is located right next to a nursery school. There's not a single campus in America. Is this, uh, the, uh, the nearest example is Stanford. But at Stanford, the plant is four times further from any residence. So my point is this, and I'll be done. The location of the plant is a science project and the children will be the guinea pigs. So we'll see how that works out. Now Princeton administrators do not get it. They fail to understand, and I've been here longer than they have. Okay? So they fail to understand that this is laughing stock will be their legacy. And I call it a laughing stock because I, I, I've spent decades trying to recruit faculty to Princeton. This is going to be a joke. I mean, as soon as they see that Princeton builds a power plant, I know you don't like the word, but call it whatever you want. A plant right next to a nursery school, they simply going to laugh their heads off. That will be the legacy of anybody who approves this project. Again, I'm not against the project itself. I'm against its location. There was a request many months ago about possible of the locations. Any follow, follow through? Nothing. Not a word. Okay? So anyway, uh, these are my questions. I thank the board for being patient with me. I believe I've asked very specific questions and we need to have very specific answers. The board needs the answers and the community needs the answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in line is Todd Cronin.
Hello.
If you could raise your, this is a new application. If you could raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So it's one or firm. Please state your full names, spell your last name and give your address.
My name is Todd Cronin, C R O N A N, and I'm at forty-four Hartley Avenue. So just to be clear, our house is on virtually all of Ron's slides at the bottom right corner there. So it's a corner of, of Broadmead and faculty is, is where we are. So this, we are the closest property to this, to this plant. And I, I, I very much want to follow up very, very much what Tara could said and what Bernard just said. And I think that the numbers that we've been provided by Sexton and by Julie Fisher are specious. To be very, very blunt, and I can explain why. So a little bit of background, Jeff Grosser from the township health department, and maybe some of you know him, insisted that the university install twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven sound monitoring devices, devices on our property. So this is what Ron mentioned before. This was not, this was not Ron's suggestion. This was Jeff Grosser's suggestion. Jeff Grosser insisted that they install the sound monitoring and they have. And, and it's in our property and it's on Olga's property. As we're closest to the construction site. This device is monitored by Accent Tech, a third party hired by the university at Jeff Grosser's request. With this device, I can tell you right now what the decibel level is at our house this very moment. It is currently at this very moment, thirty-eight. Now, you've got numbers from Julie Fisher and all of her publications explaining that the neighborhood ambient level is forty to forty-five. It is currently at this moment thirty-eight and it will be in the middle of the night at thirty-five. Every single day is between thirty-eight and thirty-two, thirty-two and forty. It is not over forty. I would ask Julie, I want to put her on the spot right now and ask her exactly who did the measurement in November to give us this absolutely crucial information about ambient noise levels in the neighborhood? And that person was Kristen Applegate. Kristen Applegate is the one that in all of these official documents from Julie Fisher and from Sexton, Kristen Applegate stood on the sidewalk with her handheld device. I'm fairly, Kristen's a great woman. Love Kristen. Kristen is not a qualified acoustician. And that this is the number that they're providing for everyone is galling, galling. So the number right now is thirty-eight. And these numbers can be downloaded. Accent Tech will give you the numbers. This is official. They can be downloaded and viewed by anyone at any time. You can all look at it right this moment. I can give you the web address. This, this does twenty-four seven monitoring at our house and Olga's house. The information it provides is crystal clear. What it tells me is that the ambient levels in the neighborhood every single night stay in the thirty decibel range. And I'll, I just want to repeat that. So it's crystal clear. Every single night and weekends, the decibel levels remain within the thirty-two to forty decibel range. What does that mean? That means that the university, by the university's own estimation, the new power plant will raise noise levels twenty-four seven, three sixty-five by anywhere between five and fifteen decibels forever. Five and fifteen decibels forever for the neighborhood. Emily Pierceall just testified that a three decibel change is, in her words, considered to be a typically, typically noticeable sound difference. Typically noticeable sound difference. It's a three decibel change. What is being projected by the numbers given to us by Julie Fisher, which I don't believe is ten higher. Ten higher than the ambient. That is a drastic, significant alteration to the landscape of, of this neighborhood. So this is an alteration in the quality of our life and our home and our neighborhood. Now, this reality starkly contradicts the claims of Julie Fisher and Sexton. Julie told me on the twenty-seventh October in a meeting that we have recorded, this is. Julie told me on the twenty-seventh October in a meeting that we have recorded, this is from, this is Julie's words. Again, this is in a document, during the day, you're not going to hear it. And at night, you might hear it a little bit if you listen carefully. This is false. This is simply manifestly false. If it is thirty-five decibel out, outside in the ambient and the plant is running at forty-five, you will hear that. The difference between a median ambient level of thirty-five at night and the university's own projected forty-five is a ten-decibel difference. Every three decibels is twenty-three percent louder. Every, every three decibels is twenty-three percent louder, which is why, exactly why Emily Pierceall said what she said. This is a difference. So a ten-decibel difference, humans will hear, dogs will hear, cats will hear, babes will hear, deer will hear, ticks will hear, mice will hear. Everything living will hear this. This is a massive change to environment. So I have really my question. It's not about the plant, whether you should have a plant. I think the plant's great. Have a plant, put it somewhere else. Why does the plant have to be cheek by jowl with the neighborhood? A final, a final point. I have two published reports provided by Fisher and Sexton regarding noise, and this is what I think Bernard was getting at. The first published in December of twenty nineteen indicated sound levels at thirty-five to forty. This is all publicly available on the Princeton University website. The twenty nineteen published information was put the sound levels at location four, thirty-five to forty. And I said, great, we're in business here. Let's build this thing, guys. That sounds perfect. Thirty-five, forty, I won't hear that. No one will hear that. Will barely hear it. Then it was changed. So the second report published in December of twenty twenty, mystery, mysteriously and without any explanation, and I believe this is what Bernard was mentioning, raised those levels from forty to forty-five. So from thirty-five to forty-five, that's ten-decibel change with no explanation. That is a massive difference, a ten-decibel difference. All the arguments about the silence of this plant are out the window, which is exactly what they were arguing in December for the public presentation. The public dialogue, the public discussion about this plant was silence. You will not hear it. And that's what, that's what they published, thirty-five to forty, and then they just changed it. And then he made it a miserable situation. Moreover, I and my neighbors, and I'm just about done. I and my neighbors have asked repeatedly, probably six or seven times for an account, and include things like climate and wind, and this has never happened. And this leads me to one conclusion, which is I think exactly what Tarek was suggesting. I think it's what Bernard was suggesting. I think other members of the public will suggest. The Sexton numbers are not reliable. They simply are not reliable. And this, the cost of a mistake of this magnitude of getting those projections, the modeling dead wrong is significant and potentially creating damages that can't be fixed.
Mr. Cronin, could you coordinate, these, these reports that you're referring to are the same ones that Mr. Chazelle was referring to?
I believe, they probably are. I'm not sure.
If, if you could coordinate with him and just so we can get all of them that you're referring to and he's referring to.
Yes, and I would love to get you the, the recording of the ambient levels. You can look, all look at them in live time. It's, it's scintillating.
That would be great. That would be great also. Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Sure. Let me just say a couple of things. One is, we have a hard stop at eleven o'clock. It is now ten minutes to eleven. I wanted to ask, we, we'll get at least one other person speaking, but I would like to pick up people who can't come back and have them speak very briefly. How many of the people who are waiting here can't come back to speak some other time? Anyone?
Maybe we can ask, if you can lower your hands. We had eight people. One person just lowered their hand. We're, we're, it's getting better. We have three hands still up. Two hands still up. Three hands. All right. So we might be able to do it, but I, I do want to remind you, Madam Chair, that we do have the matter of the referral for the area in need of redevelopment to also.
So maybe we should just consider using that as the final report for this evening and then we'll move all, all the rest of the questions that go with Tiger and so on to the next meeting.
And don't forget, we have Mr. Affrin. Bruce, do you have any witnesses you're gonna put on?
We have to invite Bruce back in so he can respond.
I will do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Bruce, do you, do you have any witnesses you're gonna put on?
Well, you know, that depends because the existence of this new report may change that. But I'm gonna have an extensive cross-examination.
Okay.
There's gonna be a lot of that.
Okay.
It's helped actually to have the public portion first because that avoided my having to repeat some ground, but there's gonna be.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm sorry, what, what is the verdict on this? Should, should we move to the we should move, we should move the big questions on Tiger and so on to the next meeting. Is that right? And then the.
Sounds right to me, Wanda, because I know there's lots more people who want, want to speak and I'm not sure what, what exact meeting we would continue this to, that some, something maybe Carrie can weigh in on. But that'll give us a few minutes to, to talk about the, the North Harrison study area, which, which we really do need to address.
The university is scheduled for our next meeting for a site plan and minor subdivision. It should go fairly quickly and we can tack this up on after that, if that's acceptable.
This is please.
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first.
Louise and Wanda, I wonder, would it be possible for the question to come at the beginning of the meeting? Because I know there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that would love to get a question in and, you know, I, giving, coming in at ten forty-five is, I think.
That's where we are. I mean, the university is finished with its presentations, so now we're in, in public question, so we'll start with that.
Yes.
So, but may, I think Mr. Cronin was asking if, if it can be the first item on the agenda. As opposed to going through a whole nother application, which we might think is simple, but we're often wrong.
I think it's a good idea.
So I, I don't know the answer to, to that question. I guess it's entirely up to us with.
I know that this is gonna take a lot longer than the universities and the Ivy Club, so I think we should do Ivy quickly. What do you think, Chris?
Why would we do Ivy quickly?
I just think it's parking lot and the, it's not a, a large change. It's a reduction to what was previously approved and.
Wait, Ivy right now?
No.
No, no. So, 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 let me explain. Ivy application is an adjustment of the lot line that separates Princeton University from the Ivy Club. So we are adjusting the lot line and there are some landscaping and parking improvements, like the parking lot's being redone on Ivy and some landscaping. So it's a pretty simple application. I think from the university's perspective, we would like to do Ivy first because we think we, we can certainly get through it and get it done. We're not sure how, you know, much time the Tiger is gonna take and will take as much time as needed. But we would appreciate if we can go with Ivy first.
On, on the twenty-first, you're saying?
On the twenty-first, and then once we finish that, we'll continue this, this application. If that's okay with the board, that's what we would like to do.
What about Mr. Affrin's cross-examination and people? Where is that gonna fit into this?
I think after the rest of the public comment? Because he was just saying that it was helpful to have the public comment first.
Well, then you'll have to come at the end of the meeting on the twenty-first, if he wants the public comment first.
I don't care in particular. I was just noting that it was useful to hear some of that because it does save me the trouble of going through some facts, but I can do it either way. I think the most important thing is for the neighbors to feel they're able to speak. So I think that's the most critical factor.
Just a thought, is there another meeting where we could devote the whole meeting to Tiger?
There's always another meeting.
Actually, I have no room on my schedule that I'm aware of until March.
March is good.
The questions will probably still be very valid in March and it's already middle of January.
So, Chris. I think, you know, if ultimately we end up there, we end up there. But I think for purposes of tonight, Ivy is on on the twenty-first. If we could put it to after Ivy and see what we can do. If Ivy goes really quickly, maybe we can get the whole thing done. If not, whatever we need to do, we'll get it done in terms of timing. And it can always be carried to another date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well. That would be my preference. I don't see the point of having an hour-long meeting when we know we have tons of stuff coming.
Yes.
So let's get as much done on the twenty-first as we can.
Okay, so the twenty-first will be Ivy and then back to Tiger. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Affrin will have to be slotted in at some point.
I would assume that's as soon as the public finishes their questions unless university has cross-examination.
Okay.
If I may, just for members of the public, there'll be no further written notice. It's gonna be carried, as the chair just indicated, to January twenty-one. That's the only notice you, what we're saying right now is the only notice you'll be getting.
Jerry, for purposes of the record, anyone that wants to participate can go to the municipal website to the agenda page and find the link for the Zoom there, I assume. Correct?
I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would think so, yes.
Yes. I, I just want to make sure everybody knows how to link in. They go to the agenda, Planning Board Agenda, the link is on the agenda so that they're able to, to find how to get into the meeting.
Yes, and thank you, Christopher.
All right. So it is now eleven o'clock.
Oh, I have ten fifty-nine, so we have a minute.
Yeah, we have a whole minute.
Which, which application would you like to do in your minute?
Well, yeah, if Michael could just make a brief description, brief presentation as to what the redevelopment designation possibility is all about. But as I emphasized at the outset, it's not that we have to make any decision tonight, nor should we. Because all, all this is, is notification that we're gonna be getting a request. And, and we already have gotten requests, but we're gonna prepare a preliminary of report, have a formal hearing on the area in need of redevelopment, whether it meets the criteria, to forward a recommendation back to the council. That's not tonight. That's, that's what will come after this.
Jerry, what we're doing tonight is we're voting to authorize to hire someone to do an investigation of a study. And, and so we're, that's what we're doing. And then, of course,
Okay.
we'll do the study and come back and present it to the planning board. But time is of essence because this study involves two of our affordable housing sites. So that's why it is important to get the study started.
Yep, absolutely.
We should have a motion to authorize this study and I don't, who's budgeted?
It's not to authorize a study because that, that's a function of the council. The council makes that determination. It already has. It's, it's to hire a planner to do the actual report.
Okay, well, then, will I get someone to make such a motion?
Yeah, okay.
I would be happy to make it, but I, Michael, did you wanna?
Well, I just, let's give me, let me just give you a few little facts here, just so that everybody's on the same page. I know you've all read my memos. I know you all enjoyed my memo, so that's fine. The site, the area that we're talking about, at the heart of it is the Princeton Shopping Center. We're, we're calling it as a working title, the North Harrison Study Area. It's at North Harrison Street, Turhune Road and Clearview Avenue. It's a preliminary investigation to determine the area, determine this site as an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation. The mayor and council have directed and authorized the planning board to, to go forward with a preliminary stud, study to determine a look, a location, I'm sorry, I'm a little messed up here. Location referred to as, that were referred as the North Harrison Avenue Study Area. And it's according to the, to designate it as an area, a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment under the state statute that's cited in my memo. The study area, it's to give the property, basically to give the property owners maximum flex, flexibility in terms of design options for future development. The, I don't know if you saw in the memo, there was a map showing the shopping center. The area also includes Grover Park. It includes a vacant site that's at the corner of Turhune and North Harrison. And it also includes the former P Forest building site, as well as two adjacent residential properties that are owned by the municipality. Let me see what else. I just wanted to note that some of the reasons why the area is being considered and for, for studying it as an area in need of redevelopment is that we've got a large shopping center that was built in the nineteen fifties and is more or less functionally and economically obsolete. As you know, there's a very large vacancy, very high vacancy rate at the shopping center. And this is probably one of the most troubling times for retail that we've faced, faced in, in many decades. So it's, it seems like an appropriate time to rethink the use of this largely retail development. It has some accessory office and professional uses, but it's mostly a retail center. And then, of course, we wanted to be as comprehensive as possible in considering, considering the site. So the adjacent uses such as Grover Park, the P Forest build, the former P Forest building, the two residential properties owned by the municipality and the vacant site to the north, which is earmarked for housing. It just, the, makes good planning sense, of course, to think of it comprehensively and how all these properties would work well together. So that, that's basically what's before you. I don't know if the council president or councilwoman Sacks wants to add to that because they've been very involved.
Yes, I would, I would just like to say that if, if people, from the way you described, Michael, which is a good description of, I think, where our shopping center is right now, which is mid-century, mid-century massively underutilized and, and somewhat defunct. And I, but it's not that it would, there are existing leases with existing tenants. It's not like there's any, you know, movement to tear the whole shopping center down. It's that this area involves two of our largest affordable housing sites. And this would, and they are, one in particular is, is quite constrained. And I, I think there've been a, a number of comments from the public about the fact that the, the sites that are built in this shopping center area were constrained in their design by the existing zoning, which so we, which made for some less than ideal planning decisions. And this would just, this would give a bit more flexibility overall to sort of re, to think about the entire area, the connections between the different sites. It would allow for greater flexibility of cooperation between the, 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 the new developments coming in for the, for the, for the developers to cooperate with one another, to come up with plans that, as I said, were holistic and make more sense for the site as a whole, as opposed to each site being shoehorned in around a shopping center that could possibly be part of the process. So this would mean that the, the, the owner of the shopping center actually would be part of the process with the other developers of thinking about what makes sense for the entire area as a whole. So it's just a, it's a more logical, more forward-thinking way to proceed. It also means we could think about stormwater, not just site by site, but how it relates to the entire site. but how it relates to the entire site. There're just, there're, there're a lot of things that if we're going to be doing such major development on the site, would make more sense if we think about the entire site and have more room for flexibility. So this is, yeah. Jeffrey had a question.
Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm all for it, but I was just wanted to clarify, like, we, we did, we did pass, you know, some, some form of a zoning change or overlay, right? So is this, is this, is this, is this sort of redoing that? Or is it, is it sort of, is this, is this entirely different from what that was for?
It's not redoing that, but it's basically bringing in the shopping center to the process. And I guess it does, you know, um, open up the possibility that there might be some modifications and variations. But no, it, it's, it's, um, it's basically a connective function.
And we, we do have, so we do have flexibility within the settlement agreement to, to make these kinds of changes?
Our, our settlement agreement, we, you know, we have an ongoing relationship with fair share. That, that what fair share cares about is that we comply with our affordable housing unit requirement. So however we do that, um, you know, that what, what, what they care about and what the court cares about is that we fulfill the, you know, we, we provide the amount of units that we agreed to.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay.
I, I have a question, Madam Chair. First of all, I support this. I think it's a great idea. I've just, I'm a little confused. Does this include the site that we approved the concept plan for that included four units of affordable ownership, possible affordable ownership that fronted on Turhune?
It does not.
Okay, so that's, so there's, that site will move forward according to the plan that we saw. And it's just the other, the, the parcel that was considered for senior care at one point is, is.
Is part of it, yeah.
And, and, but I will say that, you know, um, this sort of enables us to realize a vision that, that I think was talked about in the beginning, which is, you know, we've been doing first the, the, you know, the two parcels on the Thanet property, and that was designated as redevelopment. And then, you know, rather than continuing to just do spot redevelopment, so to speak, this is about really, uh, you know, even though it doesn't impact that site, the, the one with the townhouses, it will benefit. And I would imagine that that developer will also be part of this discussion because the bike lanes, the vehicular access, the pedestrian connections, the stormwater, the parking, uh, you know, there, there's, um, also, you know, the way it stands now, there's one developer who's creating a small tot lot, another developer who was talking about creating another recreational activity. And then we have the Grover Park. And so if, rather than having all of these divided, separate developments where everyone's doing their own sort of enclosed, disconnected, uh, uh, development, it, it really makes more sense to give them all the opportunity to talk together about how this could, how this could actually be a neighborhood, as opposed to a bunch of disconnected developments that are sort of shoehorned in there.
Wonderful, be a great place for a dog park.
Here, here.
Well.
I do have, I do have a question. Regardless, one of the properties listed was 351 Turhune, um, which I've walked that area and I can't find, uh, there's no property on it, no number.
It's the quarter.
But when, but when I look at every mapping app that I looked at, it puts it on the other side of Harrison. And I just want to make sure that this is one contiguous area and that there's not a discrete element to it.
Yeah, it is. If you look on the map, we do have, they're all, I don't know if you saw the map that was attached.
But it, but it didn't have the property, that particular property.
Yeah, we have a list of lots, lots, yeah.
Well, that would be very unfortunate because across Harrison is for Mr. DeFalco.
Exactly.
That would be a really good catch, O'Donnell. So as the obvious first step, um, I, I, I would make a motion that we undertake the investigation and.
I wondered if we were going to get back to that.
I'll second.
Yes. I mean, the motion is really.
A roll call vote or a voice vote?
I mean, the motion is really to authorize somebody to hire a consultant to prepare the map and the report. We, we, we've already been tasked by the, by the governing body with doing the investigation and it's not our choice whether to do it or not.
Great. Michael, Michael, Michael does the hiring, correct?
Yeah.
Scenario, good.
Yeah, so I think would be a motion to authorize Michael to hire a consultant for this, for this project.
Would we take, why don't we take a roll call vote since we've gone this?
Since we've gone this far.
Yes.
Good. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Do we have a motion and second?
Yes.
Yes.
Was moved by Ms. Wilson and seconded by me.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification, Jerry.
Okay.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, before we start another project or something, can I ask David to declare?
Entertain a motion to adjourn. Yes.
Second, second.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Happy New Year.
Hi, everybody.
Aye, rhymes with bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, same to you.